Okay, everyone, it's 6:30. If everybody could take their seat, please. Mr. City Manager, if you could take your seat. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. And we'll get started. Mauricio, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Goldman.
Here.
Commissioner Lama.
Here.
Commissioner Viscara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge. Fabiola, since you're front and center, you can lead us in the pledge tonight.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rabbi Haber, nice to have you here.
I'll ask for a moment of silence for Barbara Del Sol, a third grade teacher that lost her battle to cancer. well as in the rest of the country, to come together in brotherhood and unity. Our Father in Heaven, may it be your will that we all join together to achieve divine dignity in all of humanity. At this pivotal time in our country's history, bless us, Almighty, to overcome social, racial, and religious strife. Bless us with solidarity to promote tolerance and goodwill. We ask merciful Father to bless our civic leaders here in Sunny Isles and their colleagues in all of Florida and throughout the United States to protect each other's way of life, to appreciate one another's commonality, as well as each other's values, to promote respecting one another's rights to those who may look different, speak a different language, or raise and educate their children according to their ancestral traditions. May we always remember that we are blessed to live in a land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. He who makes peace in his high places may bring peace upon us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Okay, has anybody had a chance to review the commission meeting minutes of December 19th? If so, could I have a motion approved?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion carries. Could we roll our tape for our introductory statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the city commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay, there's a few changes to tonight's agenda. Item 5A has been deferred. Item 5C of my State of the City address has been added on. Item 9A, we've got a, it's been revised. Item 10K, petitioning the DBPR has been revised. Item 10M, change orders 26 and 27 have been an add-on. Item 10N, we're going to declare another vice mayor, a new vice mayor, or re-up the vice mayor, whatever we decide. Item 12A, we're going to have a discussion regarding SIB Residence Academy, and I'm going to take item 10J out of order because the Israeli consulate is coming, and she has a security detail, so when she gets here, we're going to indulge that resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Changes are approved. Thank you. Okay, let's go to item 5B.
5B is a presentation regarding human trafficking and domestic violence.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a little bit of a combination. I'd like to acknowledge, Dawn, who's here from Christie's House, we have a proclamation for you from October, since that was Domestic Violence Month, and we read it into the record then. Unfortunately, there was a little bit of a mix-up, so we couldn't have you come in and accept it, so we'd like to take a picture with you. But before that, I'd like to acknowledge Christie's House, that does a lot of work, not just for children of trauma, but they are very involved with children that have experienced human trafficking. As many of you probably know through the media, this is Human Trafficking Month, and because of the Super Bowl being in town, there is a huge emphasis on getting that information out to as many people as possible. I'd like to also plug an event we're doing at the school with the Police Department and Christie's House on Tuesday, the 28th, which is going to be educating people about human trafficking. So if you don't mind, Dawn, if we can please take a picture to give you the proclamation. Thank you so much for coming all the way here.
Okay, well, this is a big turnout for my State of the City address. I'm really impressed, you know? I don't think I've ever had a turnout this big before. I should know better. So by charter, every year, the mayor delivers a State of the City address at this time of year, and this year is no exception. And I actually read the address in the commission meeting, and then it'll be also posted online after this evening. So, here we go. Citizens of Sunny Isles Beach, I'm pleased to present the 2020 State of the City address. Is Norman here? Norman, you here? There he is. Okay, Norman's read a whole bunch of these, so he's had a lot of practice. So, welcome, Norm. This year, I'm delivering my sixth State of the City address. However, 2019 has been one of the busiest years the city's experienced in quite some time. I'm going to start on a solemn note, wishing farewell to former Commissioner Rosalind Bresen, who passed away in February 2019. Roz lived in our city for close to 50 years, served on the city commission for seven years, and remained an active voice in our community right up until the time of her passing. We will miss Roz and her seemingly boundless energy. Our two newest commissioners, Jennifer Viscara and Alex Lama, completed their first full year of service. Given the myriad of issues we faced as a community and commission in 2019, they learned quickly what it takes to make objective decisions in difficult situations. Last year also brought a newly outsourced legal department, which provided additional expertise and positive economic benefits to this important area of our staffing. Once again, I want to highlight the excellent financial condition we have maintained. Our city's assessed taxable value increased by approximately 4% from $11.1 billion to $11.5 billion, with $919.5 million coming from new construction being added to the tax rolls. Our millage rate remains the fourth lowest municipality in Miami-Dade County at $2.2 mils per thousand dollars of assessed value. So if you moved north to Golden Beach, it would go up over eight mils. So your taxes for the city portion would go up almost fourfold. In 2019, we made progress on our multi-year utility undergrounding and streetlight enhancement project. As one of our biggest undertakings, this is the most visible project to our residents, and often the most frustrating. Decorative streetlight installation continues and provides a noticeable improvement from 178 Street North to the William Lehman Causeway, while FPL is running underground wiring on the south end of the city. The overall completion of this project is mostly dependent now on FPL and the Florida Department of Transportation. As I pointed out last year, this is a long process that will require, that will continue to require lane closures and other frustrations, but the benefits to the city will be numerous once this work is complete. At the end of August, we spent days watching, waiting, and preparing for Hurricane Dorian, as the predicted path looked certain to come within our proximity. We were fortunately spared the wrath of Dorian. However, many of our residents participated in a city-sponsored donation drive for victims in the Bahamas. This year's preparedness received positive feedback with the addition of a sandbag distribution program, a re-entry card program in the event of an evacuation, and our first emergency utilization of the SIB Alert system to communicate directly with residents and business owners with storm updates. In late December, we were not so lucky when an epic rainstorm drenched our area. Golden Shores experienced severe flooding, prompting us to accelerate the pump station design and bidding process that had already commenced. Debris and buildup inside the outflow pipe to the bay hindered the functionality of an existing high-powered pump, which significantly slowed our ability to remove the water quickly. So now temporary pumps are in place to enable us to mitigate these types of events in the future. And the Golden Shores Undergrounding Project is currently in the design phase, including the completion of surveying of all the properties. System design work will continue through 2020 with the cooperation of our neighborhood utilities, FPL, AT&amp;T, Atlantic Broadband, and TECO Gas. Pedestrian safety remains a top priority, and a lot of progress was made in 2019 to further several strategic safety initiatives. Bus shelter replacements resulted in wider sidewalks in some areas, and we continue to widen sidewalks and illuminate crosswalks wherever possible. Our two pedestrian bridge initiatives saw significant progress this year. Design of the 180th Street Government Center Pedestrian Bridge continues. This has been a long process of multiple reviews by the Florida Department of Transportation, and now we are finally nearing design completion. In 2019, land was secured for the 174th Street and Collins Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. A study was completed, and the request for design engineering and building services is out to bidders with a planned award for spring of this year. Resiliency efforts continue to drive very important considerations for coastal communities. We've got two studies underway that will assist in planning for the future environmental needs of our city. The first is a citywide flood adaptation assessment awarded to us through a competitive application process with the American Flood Coalition. The second is a stormwater retention study that analyzes the Florida Department of Transportation stormwater retention areas for additional stormwater capacity. We are coordinating with county, state, and federal governments to ensure the long-term health of our beach. 60,000 cubic yards of sand was added to our beach from three private developments in 2018, 2019, with another 24,000 cubic yards expected in January to March of 2020. This year, we will also be in coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers for a federally-funded renourishment of the entire span of our beach, which will include the rehabilitation of the submerged breakwater structures that were installed at the north end of the city by the Army Corps in the early 2000s. Maintaining and improving our citywide drainage system is an ongoing effort and a top priority. The first phase of the Central Island Drainage Project is nearing completion, with most of the work performed in 2019, and we'll be adding two new wells on 172nd Street and installing specialty valves on several pipes to mitigate water from coming into our city from the intracoastal waterway. Our short-term rental program was officially implemented in 2019. By February 2019, we had received approximately 600 registrations for short-term rentals. During the year, we encountered unit owners circumventing both our registration requirements and their actual condominium regulations in those units, in those buildings, that do not allow short-term rentals. These experiences resulted in a modification of our ordinance to require inspections of proposed units to be used as short-term rentals. Additionally, we're requesting all internet platforms that advertise short-term rentals to post the city license number online. At the beginning of 2019, it was discovered that a portion of our land use regulations had been misinterpreted for several years, resulting in six existing buildings being deemed non-conforming. This led to a series of some of the most contentious public commission meetings and social media campaigns in the history of the city. We ultimately imposed a building moratorium in the Town Center District, created a new Southern Town Center District, and passed a comprehensive plan amendment that was favorably reviewed by the state to bring the six buildings into conformity. Moving forward, we're going to go through a public process to decide how to best treat the land uses in the remaining northern portion of the Town Center District. Everyone involved in these issues received an education in the finer aspects of land use regulations and zoning. Ella's shaking her head back there. It would be apt to coin 2019 the Year of Citizen Engagement. We saw our highest levels of resident social media usage via Twitter, up 10%, Instagram up 41%, and Facebook up 22%. Our commission and workshop meeting attendance also experienced upticks, and our SIB Alert subscribers doubled in 2019 to over 2,000. Our cultural master plan guides most of our cultural event programming and provides support to our volunteer Public Advisory Committee, or PAC. The PAC receives, reviews the art component of zoning applications as well as other city projects by utilizing experts in our curation. Then they present the recommendation to the commission. The conceptual design of the meditation garden at Town Center Park has been approved and is moving forward. The PAC also reviewed the conceptual designs of the two pedestrian bridges under development. Given the success of the PAC's process, as we closed 2019, the commission agreed to fund seed money for additional PAC projects. They now have the opportunity to apply for grants and other funding sources to continue to improve our quality of life through the arts. Our city has become known for a high level of entertainment throughout the year, and 2019 brought us some of the highest-quality programming in our region through the Gateway Live Series. Chinese acrobats, dueling pianos, and a Broadway-style concert, What a Night, were among these popular events. We renamed the Jazz Fest to Music in the Isles, which featured John Sakata at Gateway Park. The annual city anniversary celebration was also hosted at Gateway Park for the first time this year. This was all in addition to continuing our tradition of regular free concerts from rock and roll and doo-wop to full orchestras at various parks, as well as free movie programs for all ages. The Oil Painting Club took off as a free program for residents and brought people with similar interests together. Our teen-only events expanded to feature interesting and interactive activities such as escape room and sushi making. And this year, we saw a surge in healthy senior living with increased interest in the bocce club and pickleball programs, as well as tai chi. Full moon yoga continues to attract the largest crowd each month on the beach for yogis of all skill and age. And we also began building out the long-awaited center at Gateway Park, which is expected to be completed later this year. Soccer remains the most sought-after sport in town, and enrollment is constantly at max capacity, and our one soccer field is always in high demand. The city offers three soccer programs to fit all skill levels, recreational soccer, select academy, and travel soccer for the more advanced players. Last year, our youth soccer team participated and won their division of the ESPN Memorial Day Soccer Tournament at Disney. Our Sister City initiatives were quite active in 2019. In March of this past year, I led our first Sister City delegation to Hang Chong, Taiwan, with Vice Mayor Larissa Sfetchen and Commissioner Jennifer Viscara, along with residents Keith and Fang Oliver. Then, in early December, we had the honor of hosting Hang Chong Mayor Liu and their delegation. This year, we plan to welcome our third international intern by extending an invitation to Taiwan. Media and technology played a big part in our city and communication strategy. In addition to the double-digits increases in social media utilization mentioned earlier, we also launched the city's official YouTube page with 78 public videos posted to date. We were featured on the cover of Public Management Magazine, highlighting our various digital initiatives, including our free Wi-Fi on the beach, which utilizes solar panels on our lifeguard stands. We initiated an expansion to add more license plate reader cameras or LPRs to the city's own roads, starting with 189th Street, south to 185th Street. We completed Phase 2 of the security camera project throughout the city's parks and public places, ensuring complete surveillance coverage for our police department. And speaking of our police department, 2019 brought the first full year of stepped-up visibility and enforcement along Collins Avenue. From this, we've seen a noticeably less speeding and a safer environment for pedestrians and motorists. Our PD partnered with other agencies to host a major put-it-down campaign on Collins Avenue following the passing of House Bill 107 regarding distracted driving. Officers will continue to be highly visible both along our major thoroughfares and neighborhood streets. Mother's Day 2019 brought us a tragic event involving a shooting and the accidental death of a longtime employee of a Sunny Isles Beach car rental agency. Our police department was on the scene immediately, and their rapid response was credited with preventing additional casualties and injuries. Our city is always growing, and in 2019, we saw the substantial completion of Park Towers and Armani Casa. Under construction during this past year has been Marina del Mar, Aurora Tower, Milton Tower, and the Chabad of Lubavitch. The Milton Tower office building will be substantially completed in early 2020, and has attracted some high-profile clients from the Northeast, and brought us some very positive press in 2019. And finally, the Monaco was demolished in 2019, making way for construction of a new low-rise boutique hotel by Desert Development. Homestretch. Once again, I have the pleasure of reporting to our citizens a myriad of initiatives, events, and improvements that might seem to simply appear in our city throughout the year. However, none of these would be possible without the dedication of our city staff. These full- and part-time dedicated professionals do a fantastic job at carrying out the vision that the city commission and you, our residents, provide to them. There's also a legion of volunteers that assist at many of our city events, making them possible. I would like to personally thank everyone who keeps the momentum moving forward in all that gets accomplished. In the end, a real community is made up of civic-minded residents who participate and enjoy the lifestyle their community gives back. 2019 demonstrated that our citizens are passionate about their community and willing to spend time and energy expressing their views. On behalf of myself, Vice Mayor Sfetchen, and Commissioners Goldman, Lama, and Viscara, thank you for another great year, and may God bless you. Thank you. I need a drink, so let's water them. Okay, welcome. Okay, I'm going to take item 10J.
Item 10J is a resolution denouncing the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement.
Okay. My neighbor Ari Steiger, who comes from Israel, and was actually, Ari probably founded our Sister City program when we adopted Natanya as our first sister city. But Ari called me last month and said that we don't have a BDS resolution, and I actually thought we did. I, Ari, huh? We did?
No, this was on something else.
We have it on the books?
No.
You know what? We went back and looked.
No, 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 no.
It was something similar. We went back and looked, but we couldn't, but it was something similar. So, in any case, yeah.
It wasn't the BDS, it was something else.
It was something else. It was close to BDS. It was close to BDS. In any case, yeah. Okay, the good news is, that's right, you beat me to punch once again. So, okay. Ari, you want to speak the resolution?
Okay, I'll introduce our deputy council general for Florida and Puerto Rico. Her name is Casa Beyonce Harbor. Arrived in Miami in March 2019, assumed the role of deputy council general of Israel in the consulate of Miami August 19. Previously, she served as deputy harbor head of mission in the Israeli Embassy in Wellington, New Zealand. Casa was born in Ethiopia in 1991. At age 10, she immigrated to Israel with her family. Before being assigned to New Zealand, Casa served as a deputy head of a mission at the Israeli Embassy in Yan Gune, which is Burma. Casa held MA from University of Tel Aviv and in the field of public policy, and BA from Hebrew University in the field of international relations and education. She is fluent in Aramaic, which is Ethiopian language, Hebrew, and English. And I'll introduce her.
Okay, welcome. Thank you for being here. Please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, residents of the city of Sunny Isles. I'm really honored to be here. I'm very happy to be here to see such a great friend of Israel, such a supporter of Israel. As we know what's going on today in the world, they say, "I'm not anti-Jewish, I'm not anti-Semitism, I'm just anti-Zionist." But we all know that when they say they are anti-Zionist, they are anti-Semitic. The fact that you're doing this resolution is really help us to send a message to the world that even the city of Sunny Isles and Florida is the strongest friend of Israel, and there is no place for haters, and there is no place for anti-Semitism, and there is no place for anti-Zionism, and especially there is no place for BDS anywhere, and especially in your city. So thank you very much for your support and for your great friendship. We appreciate that very much. In the name of the State of Israel, please, I'm sending regards and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, sure, welcome down. Let's, I'll take a motion with that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Well, we have about one square mile here, and I, last count was nine rabbis. Okay, so we're very, we have a lot of rabbis.
Mayor, can I just say something really quickly?
Sure, absolutely.
In recognition of the liberation of Auschwitz-Burkenau, that's going to be January 27th. I have had some discussions potentially, and I was wondering if we can talk about this, for us to make a donation to that foundation, that's something that the city manager can do without us voting on it, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone is...
Sure, sure. I think that's within Chris's purview.
That's what, can you just...
Sure.
Yes, we can discuss that amount, because I have authority up to a certain amount.
Okay, and just for those in the audience that, I think everyone knows that's in this audience, but just in case, January 27th is the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, and there's a lot of press about that right now. In fact, the mayor of London has made a donation as well, and I think others are doing that. I don't know if you read about that, and I think that that really shows that we are big supporters of Israel and anti-Semitism.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And we're going to come down and take a picture, real quick. Thank you. Okay, we have a zoning hearing, so I have an introductory statement for our zoning hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening has... Ladies and gentlemen, this evening has one zoning application. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence, as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. You will first—we will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I'll allow anybody from the audience who was sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspaper, notices have been mailed and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak at this hearing, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as all you got? Thank you.
Okay. Item 6A?
Item 6A is a zoning application, number PZ 2019-09, for the property located at 125 178th Street, for a site plan approval. And before we commence, are there any ex-party communications that the commission may have had?
I actually said hello to Neeson on my way in. If that was ex parte, I guess that would—
I said hello to him.
Yeah, I guess that would be—yeah, I guess I'm guilty. So, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, as the city clerk has read, tonight's application is a site plan application approval for the estates at Aquolina Offsite Parking Garage, located at 125 178th Street, application number PZ 2019-09. The application tonight, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan and consistent with our land development regulations, or better known as the zoning code. The applicant tonight is not requesting any variances within this application, and city staff and consultants, we have reviewed this application. This application consists of an enclosed parking garage. It's eight stories, and it consists of 473 parking spaces, which out of those, two—almost 200 is 199—are for the estates of Aquolina to meet the requirements of parking. 28 of those parking spaces are for the estates of Aquolina Cell Center, and additional— and 100 parking spaces will be for the employees of the three Aqualinas. As you know, Aquolina, Hotel and Residences, the Mansions of Aquolina, and the Estates of Aquolina. The remaining parking spaces, which are 146, are for overflow purposes for future needs of the applicant and for a potential leasing opportunity, whether it will be for the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Under this proposal we bring to you tonight—it's very important to us—that there is no associated square footage or FAR or dwelling units, because this is just a parking garage. In addition also, this project includes a six-foot-wide pedestrian walkway that will be connecting the sidewalk of Atlantic Boulevard with Collins Avenue, and this wide path will be within their private property, but they're offering proffering an easement that it will accommodate it in the north side of the property. There were additional discussions within the application, and city staff at this moment doesn't have any objections to the request, and is recommending approval for this application with conditions. And one of the conditions that you don't have in front of you as part of the staff report, it is regarding the secondary entrance and entry driveway in Atlantic Boulevard. So, the applicant has agreed to proffer that the main entrance to the Aquolina Offsite Parking Garage shall be from the alleyway. The secondary garage exit entry located on Atlantic Boulevard shall be restricted to emergency entrance/exit use during the school zone operating hours, and the applicant has agreed to that. So, with the addition of that condition, we will continue recommending—the, I'm sorry—the approval of this application. The applicant will continue with the discussion, and their legal counsel will continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia.
the applicant, A3 Atlantic Boulevard LLC, part of the Trump Group. This project, as you see, the project team includes Architect Cohen Friedman Ensenosa, who's here this evening, the structural engineer, CHM, landscape architect, EDSA, the civil engineer, Thomas Checha, and traffic engineer, David Plummer. I wanna go through this rather briefly, because as is always the case, Claudia and the city administration has given you a thorough both staff report and summary of that in the presentation this evening, so I'll try not to repeat those points. But what I would like to bring to your attention, and I think it's something you're probably pretty all aware of, is the impressive track record of this group in this community. And you're looking at the projects that have been constructed by Jules and Eddie Trump, starting with the Aquolina Resort in 2006. I think it is fair to say that that single project raised the standards and raised the bar of luxury and quality of development in this community, and was a turning point in the future of this community. Since that time as well, they have developed the mansions at Aquolina, and of course, are developing the estates at Aquolina, which are under construction. I think you're also aware that the Aquolina Resort has received international attention as one of the finest hotels anywhere, including recognition from U.S. News &amp; World Report, TripAdvisor, and others as being the finest beach resort in the country, the finest resort property in the country. It goes without saying that when Julius Kennedy Trump build a project, they build it to the highest standards, highest quality, and it's a great reflection on the community. The estates at Aquolina, I will not go through the entire history, but it was originally approved in 2014. There were modifications approved on a couple of occasions, including most recently, a minor height increase, which was approved in the past year. Parking garage purpose, Claudia has gone through that with you. It is to serve the three Aquolina properties, the Mansions at Aquolina, the Aquolina Resort, and the Estates at Aquolina. Provide overflow parking for the Estates and employee parking for all three locations, and there's additional 146 surplus parking spaces, which there is consideration of possible leasing of those to the city. With respect to the consistency and compliance with the comprehensive plan, that is outlined in the staff report as well as in Claudia's comments, so I will not go through those in detail with you. Also, of course, this complies with the city code, most notably that it is in the B1 Neighborhood Business District where this structure is allowed. It is well under the maximum height that is allowed in this zoning district, and it is within the 300 feet of the off-site locations that it is intended to serve, and there are no variances which are being requested. With respect to the neighborhood context as well, I'm sure you're quite familiar with the site and the neighborhood context, which includes a number of mid-rise residential buildings, as well as the bank, as well as the Tony Romas. Most significantly, what this project does is bring a number of improvements which are of great benefit to the public. And Claudia has mentioned them, but I'd like to expand on them briefly. Number one is to design and install a six-foot-wide tree-lined pathway along the city parking lot in Aquolina's off-site parking property to provide a safe pathway for children being dropped off for school at the Norman S. Edelkupp Sunny Isles Beach Public K-8 School. Currently, children walk through the city's drive aisles. It also provides a perpetual easement to the city for parking along and access to Aquolina's alley. Will also modify the city hall entrance median fronting Collins Avenue to allow the fire department better access and egress. Will also move and install a bus shelter adjacent to city hall along Atlantic Boulevard, onto Aquolina's landscaped area along Atlantic Boulevard. Install street trees along Atlantic Boulevard, improve the city parking lot landscaping, maintain the city's landscaping along the pedestrian way, and realign the city parking spaces, resulting in no net loss of parking. Claudia has described for you the garage itself. It's eight stories, 479 spaces, and the breakdown of those spaces, so I won't repeat that. The next couple of images, the facade, as you see, there's a matte metal finish and grills. The facades are well-articulated and designed facing both east and west. The traffic patterns, this was also touched upon in the report. Most significantly, this will result in no increase or no impacts whatsoever with regard to traffic. In addition, the main entrance to the garage will be along the alley, through which the city will also receive an easement off of 178th Street. And the Atlantic Boulevard entrance or exit, as was stated by Claudia, will be restricted in use during times of school zone hours of operation. So, with that, that concludes our presentation. I would ask for just a moment, because we have Julius Trump here, and I think he would like to say a couple of words. So, if I might ask Mr. Trump to come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I'd just like to thank the city commissioners, the mayor, the vice mayor, for all your efforts in making the city so beautiful and so well-run. Much appreciated. And in particular, I'd like to just also mention city manager Chris Russo and Claudia for their efforts in assisting us in this planning, and, you know, they've set out certain strict rules that we had to abide by, but we've agreed to go with those, and we thank you for your consideration. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jules.
We are available for any questions.
Thank you, Neeson. Okay, we have no public speakers, so Alex?
Thank you. Question, I just wanted to know when the start date and end date of the bill that
The start date should be by the second quarter of this year, 2020, and the finish date by the third quarter, did you say? Third quarter of 2021.
Of 2021, okay. And where would the staging take place for the project?
Rick, could you come up here, please? Rick Chitwood, Director of Development and Construction.
Hi.
Rick Chitwood.
Hi, how you doing?
I live at 1002 Northeast 204th Lane. The staging with the lot will be done off-site of the estate site, and we also have staging areas that we've worked out behind Walgreens, where we right currently now are renting a lot that we park in.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
So, we'll be staging out of those two areas.
Out of those, okay, okay. Yeah, I was just a little bit concerned, because during the construction of that, obviously, you know, you have a lot of people going out to Collins or going into the school, and, you know, it's kind of like a bottleneck from time to time that you have forming there.
Especially, especially as you know, in the morning and the afternoons.
It's a high-traffic area, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be tough, like you say, during school hours, in the morning and the afternoons.
Yes, I know that you have some accommodations here too, you know, for that, so, okay, that's all I have. Thank you, appreciate it.
Dana?
Neeson?
Yes.
I have a few questions for you. So, there's a lot of mention in this application about the spaces that are allocated for potential leasing opportunities. So, obviously, that brings a lot, 146 additional spaces, that are really earmarked for city use. So, I'd like to know, how long have you and Jules have been negotiating for those 146 spaces to the city? How long have you guys been in negotiations with the city?
I don't think there have actually—and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there have actually been negotiations. There's been conceptual discussion that one use that can be made of these extra spaces would be leasing them to the city.
But how—it's been months or years? It was part of the original plan to do this for the extra spaces, or just kind of threw it out there?
I mean, I think it's—I don't know when it was first discussed, maybe the manager could mention.
Somewhere along the line, we talked about additional spaces, because we have a very strong need for additional parking in this area. I said that at some point over the past few months, we had some discussions—I don't know how long it's been, probably had some discussions at some point over the past couple of years, but, you know, never went anywhere except discussions yet, but we have a very strong need for additional parking in this area. My staff doesn't have enough parking, the Pelican Community Center doesn't have enough parking, and the school doesn't have enough parking. So, it made sense to think about some number of spaces, but, you know, we've never had any detailed, specific discussions about it, but we certainly can use some additional parking in this area.
Because that adds, you know, a couple of floors extra, I would think, you know, to that. My other question is, how central to the project's success would be the leasing of those spaces? Is this part of your design, or is it just—you're just having these preliminary discussions about the leasing, or?
Well, Commissioner, a couple of things. You've seen the breakdown of the need for the three buildings, the employees, as well as guest parking. But I know it is the strong belief of my client that there's a great need for parking, and they would rather provide for what is needed and what may potentially be needed than be short on parking. So, those 146 spaces are not specifically designated, there's been the concept of the city using them, but they feel very strongly that they want to provide adequate and ample parking, and that providing some more parking is something that actually may very well be needed in the future to alleviate conditions.
I was just, you know, wondering if there's any give, because that's, you know, eight stories is a—
Well, when you say give, it's—
It's high, it's high, it's high.
It is well—obviously, well within the height limit in the area, but, you know, the other thing is, they are actually—it is somewhat of a burden on their part. They are undertaking the cost of building the parking, the extra parking, potentially or not immediately having it utilized. And so, candidly, in my experience, I know very few developers who would do that. They're actually taking an additional risk by doing this, but they—you know, you know the Trumps, it's a huge investment in this town, longtime commitment, they feel it would be better to build more parking to anticipate future needs, and so that is why they proceeded in this fashion.
So, there's been no formal negotiations about the leasing or anything like that?
No.
And, okay, and then—and there's no way of this access or this exit point on Atlantic Boulevard, because obviously, that's the concern about the school and the patterns and that, you know, that pedestrian walkway. There's no—there's—it has—we have to have two exits, right? Legally, we can't—we can't just block it off for good, we just have to be able to restrict it.
It's for safety reasons, and it's required, but we have agreed to a condition clearly that the alley is the primary entrance and exit, and actually, that works better. And the additional restrictions that Ms. Hasgyn read to you this evening, that the limitations on use during school zone hours of the other exit.
You know, for me, I'm familiar a little bit with that intersection, because that's the intersection to take the kids to school, and so I know that that light—it's definitely a backup in the morning. You know, obviously, anybody, any parent that takes that road on 178th has a little concern about, you know, that traffic pattern and, you know, adding the extra, you know.
We did do a traffic study. We did find that it should not impact that, and if you— you, also if you dig deeper into and look at the hours when it will be used, it does not conflict with school, school drop-off and pickup hours.
Okay, okay, that's it.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi. Where do the, where do the employees of the Aquilina currently park?
Well, currently, they're parking on that surface lot, right? And, Commissioner, and, but this will provide the substitute for that as well as for the additional buildings that are being built and the additional employees.
For what's coming?
For what's coming.
And would you consider extending the hours of restricting that other exit beyond the school, make, just limiting that, because it's obviously during the school drop-off and pickup, it's, have you, have you had the pleasure of being here when that's going on? It's, it's something, you know, and even now, sometimes I'm just trying to pull into, into government center, I have to wait for the boys who just dropped their bike in the middle of the sidewalk to, to move it. So it's, it is a concern, that pedestrian safety piece is a huge concern, especially, obviously, during those times, but also the traffic piece, I don't understand conceptually how we can have almost 500 parking spaces and it have, like, no impact. Can you explain that?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me go into that, and Commissioner, I've been up here an awful lot of times, but not necessarily during school drop-off and pickup hours, but here's, here are the things. Parking garages do not generate any traffic, they're not a use. People aren't going to a parking garage just to park, they're going because they're utilizing other uses, hotel, condo, restaurant, whatever it might be. So that, parking, the traffic demand does not increase as a result of the garage. The other thing that's important to note is, in addition to the conditions that are in our order, 178th Street is the main entrance, we have a restriction on the use of the Atlantic Boulevard entrance or exit during school hours. But the other thing is, just to walk you through briefly some of the uses to see how it's not going to be conflicting, if their employees are going to usually come very early, or, or much later, not during the times when school kids are being dropped off. Hotel guests, don't check in at 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. in the morning, the same with restaurant, visitors to the restaurant. So the study, in terms of not only, does it not generate more traffic, because it's not a use, uses generate traffic, not garages, but it's the hours of the uses and the types of uses that also provide less conflict. It's not as though you're building, let's say, an office building where everybody comes in from 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock, and everybody leaves from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock. These are hotels, these are residences, people come and go at different hours of the day, it's not a, something that would impact it at the hours that you are rightfully most concerned about.
And with regards to the, we have different categories of parking spaces, right, including the surplus that may or may not be leased, it's not earmarked for the city, it's just been talked about, so that's potentially up for grabs technically still. Would, would, here's, here's my concern, I'll just tell you what my concern is, if you build it, they will come, right? So I feel that if we create a lot of extra parking, which we need, but, but if, but maybe we're also encouraging that traffic, because I still feel vehicles have to get to the garage, and you are generating traffic in that sense. How can you address that?
Yeah, I'd like to try to address your concern, Commissioner, and show you where it really is, is not a problem. So, again, uses themselves, restaurants, hotels, offices, et cetera, stores, generate the parking demand. So what happens here is, there, Aquilina is already a hotel and a resort, their parking is valet parking, it's not a self-parking hotel, so that use and demand is already there. The same with the mansions, which is the residents and employees there, the same will be the same, same with the estates. So it's not, it's not doing anything to generate parking demand, all it is doing is accommodating and, and, you know, accommodating the parking demand, and actually doing it in a, in a very organized fashion.
Thank you.
No, just as Mr. Trump was saying, if it's in excess of their needs, they may cut back, but they haven't, you know, the size of the garage, but they have not made that determination yet. I know, again, because they're long-term investors, major first-class properties, they've always wanted to make sure that, that things are properly accommodated, and this would actually be probably one of the few cities that I work in where people would be asking for less, less parking rather than more.
We're all not asking for less parking, just to be clear.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I gotta say, I love that we are talking so much about a parking garage, because I don't think that we've ever done that here, so that's, that's good. Thank you for answering the question. So I have a question regarding the height, there was a comment made about the height, and I don't know, Claudia, if you want to come up to answer the question, technically, you can go up to which, which height? If they wanted to, they can go up to which height?
The maximum height for that area, it's 190 feet.
Which is 19 stories.
Which could be 18, 19 stories.
And, and it's going to be eight?
It's going to be eight stories, and in feet, it's going to be 102 feet.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, as far as the impact to Commissioner Viscara's statement, can you give us a comparison? For instance, Heritage Park has a garage that also has, that the city uses, but also Marco Polo uses. Can you, can you give the people in the audience and for us on the dais, an example of how that is used versus how this will be used?
Sure. So Heritage Park...
Which is adjacent to a park with little kids as well.
It's next to it, but Heritage also has a parking garage component. Therefore, the generator is not the parking garage. As you mentioned, probably the trips, the needs for that parking, they were already existing, and as we all know, that parking garage is serving the hotel across the street, and of course, it's serving the residents that go to the park, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see the relationship that Neeson was trying to make is, they don't go to the garage just to go to the garage, they are looking for other spaces where already that trip is already generated for the new, for the Marco Polo Hotel, for the park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But that's a great example, that you can see that the relationship, it is not within the parking garage itself, it is with the users surrounding that area. In the same example, this parking garage, it is for the users surrounding that parking garage, which in this case is the estates of Aquilina, the Aquilina and the mansions of Aquilina, and potentially City Hall.
And the garage would be for employees, so unlike the Marco Polo, which is for the valet, which is going back and forth, the employees would ideally be there for their entire shift? Is that correct?
That's what the applicant has mentioned.
And so for the, is it 136 or 146? Because I heard two different numbers.
146.
146.
146, the surplus.
So, and those 146, would those potentially be also used for valet, or, or you don't know at this point? And I'm not suggesting you should cut them out, because we need parking, I'm just asking.
I don't know, I don't know, Rick, if you, if you have an answer, then, you have to come to the microphone.
A lot of that parking over there, it's for the residences, for long-term parking. People that are saying, I'm going back to New York for three months, they'll take their cars open to the door.
Right.
Instead of keeping on-site, people that are on-site, living there, their cars will be kept on-site.
So like a long-term garage in a, in a, in an airport versus a short-term garage kind of thing?
Yeah, basically, a lot of that use is, that's what it's...
Okay. And then, are you familiar with the times of the schools there? Because it's not just one hour, it's, it's from, you know, around 7:45 in the morning until about 8:30 in the morning, and then the afternoon, and then Wednesdays is different.
Yes, and that is, those are pretty standard around the county.
Okay, and is it possible to limit the work when, when it's being constructed as well, so that the work is not happening during the school's drop-off and pickup? Is that possible?
I don't know. You have to come up with something.
I'm just...
Safety plan in the department.
Just, Commissioner Goldman mentioned that she's familiar with that area, four of us have kids at the school, so...
Well, I would add that the city, I know, requires a maintenance of traffic, which in which you have to detail things such as this, that would be part of the construction.
Yeah, and you've, you've been, of all the construction I've seen in the city, you've been fantastic and very organized and very respectful of that, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, again, about the times, and then I think I had...
I have a couple more questions.
And, a question about the entrance, how would you get in and out of the garage? So for instance, if somebody was looking to use the garage that was not an employee of the Aquilina...
It's private.
It's a clicker.
Yeah, they couldn't.
Yes, you could get in with that.
Electronic control.
Yeah.
Electronic control, okay, just, great, thank you. That's it.
I have a couple more questions. So, Chris, this is directed, I know you, there's an interest in the city in these 146 parking spaces, you're going to have lifts and so forth in this garage. Are you also looking for long-term parking, or is this going to be in and out and a lot of impacts in the vehicles that you're anticipating to utilize this parking garage?
Well, well, first of all, I don't think that we need all, I don't think we need the full amount of parking that they're, you know, that they have access. I was thinking, you know, somewhere between maybe 50 and 100, but that's, you know, that's something that we've never teased out. The fact is that, I don't know the answer to that, I can tell you that there would be a lot of vehicles that would be employees of, of at least PCP and City Hall, because one of the things, this all, you know, there's a, there's a chain reaction to this whole thing. For example, we're in the midst of reviewing security and safety studies that we've done on this building, on the community center, we've gotten involved a little bit with the security over at the school, and one of the things, just one small example, which this garage could help significantly, all our police vehicles need to be secured somewhere. It wouldn't be that garage, it would be the property we own to the north side of City Hall, it might be a gated-off level, but it's very important to do something that we don't do now. Our police cars with substantial equipment in it is all over City Hall without one compound. There's, if I can get all the employees, say, into this garage, when they come and go during the day, I can create the secure space that the police should have by all the security studies that we've done, and that's just one fairly big example.
All right, but I'm wondering...
So the number's not, we don't need all, the answer is, we don't need it all.
We, I guess the question is, if we don't need all, is there any way to one floor or two, or is it not? I just...
I, I don't know how, you know, that's going to work, I haven't, you know, dealt with the plans or, or, you know, we haven't gotten that far into it. We haven't gotten into it at all, really.
Also, because of, I'm just tracking what Commissioner Viscara articulated, which is, you know, this kind of, the overall impacts of having a 400 and some odd, you know, garage, whether or not there's any potential to widen the, the street so that we'd have more, more roadway access. Is there any room, or is it, you just have one, one portion of it, and we can't really force the other property owner to, you know, something to alleviate? Because again, we all know what that traffic light is on 178th Street, it just takes, we just know what, what it is to cross Collins Avenue and go from east to, to west. Is there any chance to alleviate that?
Commissioner, we have done, you know, as required, a traffic study, and the traffic study truly shows no impact, and again, as I may have mentioned before, but this is not, this is not a, but this is not a rush-hour kind of garage. This is multiple uses, some people are going to be there all day, some people are going to come very early in the morning, some people are going to come late at night, some people are going to come throughout the course of the day if they're hotel guests, so you're just not going to have those kind of impacts.
I, you know, I'd like to see something if we could, you know, if we don't need all the spaces somehow to shrink it down a little bit, but...
Okay. I'd like to point something out, so, you know, you have two entrances of, so you have the one, the alleyway by the Bank of America, I don't know if you've driven by there, but it's very cumbersome. So one concern that I have, when we, when we prohibit the entrance on 178th because of the school, et cetera, I'm afraid of some backup, you know, in that alleyway, because I don't know if you pulled into Bank of America into the alleyway, it's got like a little curve and cars are like, it's so, I'm just a little concerned that, you know, if you're sending your valet parkers there, or people are trying to get in there, it'll cause some backup on that street. So, just something to be mindful of.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I get to go last, so, okay. Really, there's, just, first of all, the garage would be constructed in a commercial block, which is a good thing, so we're not, we're not laying it up against a residential building, we're not, you know, and, and so, that's number one, from my perspective. Number two, it's always been my understanding that this is not, this is not going to be an intensity use, in other words, it's not like the one at, 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 what do we call it in the north?
Heritage.
Heritage Park, I'm sorry, I get all these parks confused. It's not like the one at Heritage Park where the valets are running back and forth across the street. The bulk of the parking is going to be folks that come and park and either stay all day, or, there's a lot of rich people that live in Jules' buildings that have a bunch of fancy cars and leave them here all, you know, when they leave. So they come down for two months out of the year, and they leave their Rolls Royce in the, up there for the other 10 months out of the year. So when this garage was conceptualized, it was my understanding that, that, you know, a good chunk of it's long-term use, and then a good chunk of it is not valets, you know, running back and forth. But the, the other positive aspect of it is, the alley is the secondary, is the primary means of ingress and egress, not Atlantic Boulevard. So we're not, so we don't have valets running cars into Atlantic Boulevard and running back and forth. No, no, I get it, yeah, I understand. You're, you're talking about the alley when, when the Bank of America, right. So, and eventually, I'm sure the Bank of America is going to get redeveloped as well, but the fact is, is that I believe that that's good. The other piece of it is, I understand, you know, it'd be nice to have another 10 less feet, but, you know, it could be 190, okay? It's 105, and the fact is, to knock 10 feet off of it, or 15 feet, for over 100 spaces, I'd rather have the 100 spaces. I mean, that's me personally, because we are chronically underparked here, everybody. Winston Towers is always hitting on us for parking places every time something's going on, I mean, you know, every neighboring, every neighboring condominium is always hitting on us for parking places. So I think that, I don't think that, I don't think that, that, once we're going up past three or four stories, I don't think eight stories relative to what it could be, you know, that's, this is like half the height of the Ramada Hotel Building. So, so, all things considered, from my perspective, the parking's not that intense, the, it's not going to be jockeying cars all day long, we got the secondary means of ingress and egress, and it's, it's in a commercial district to begin with, I'm supportive. So, with that, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Second, Mauricio?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetson?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Thank you. And Neeson, if you could just work with the city manager on the school hours, okay?
Okay.
We didn't make it a formal proffer, but I think that, I think what I heard was, you know, I'm, I'm not the one with kids in the schools, everybody else is.
Absolutely, we'll do that, and thank you, and thank you very much for your consideration. Thanks to the administration.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That is it for our zoning hearing tonight, and we're going to move on to item 7A, and I'm, I'm glad to see a lot of my neighbors here, I haven't seen a lot of my neighbors here in a long time, but, but I appreciate my neighbors being here, and, and my phone was blowing up on this one, so, Mauricio, you want to read item 7A, please?
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter 265 entitled "Zoning of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach," to amend section 265-5 to adding definition for place of public assembly, to amend section 265-31(c)(2) allowing for places of public assembly as a conditional use in single-family residential zoning district, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date, and this is first reading.
So Claudia, we need a clear explanation of this ordinance.
I will try, Mayor.
It's clearly misunderstood, okay? Thank you.
Basically, in resident...
Basically, in residential areas such as Golden Shores, Atlantic Isle, that is considered one of the most restrictive areas. However, there are certain uses that they are allowed through conditional uses. A conditional use is basically a use that it has to come in front of the commission to get approval. Right now, the language in the code only specifies those as religious institution, religious facilities, but it doesn't go in depth about the congregation aspect of that use. So what we are proposing for you is that you don't only consider the resident, I'm sorry, the religious institution as congregation spaces, because it could be that some other groups, they might not follow under the same umbrella and they want to establish themselves within a residential neighborhood. So we want to make sure that that assembly of public, it is within a broader umbrella. So we will have the regulations in place to be treated such as conditional uses.
So what you're saying is, it's an expansion of a restriction?
Correct.
Okay, right.
Can I try to help a little bit?
Go ahead, Ed, thank you.
Currently, in our code, childcare facilities, after-school facilities and religious facilities are prohibited in residential neighborhoods unless that entity obtains a conditional use from the City Commission. The intent of the amendment was to increase the number of uses that are prohibited in a residential neighborhood to include the things that are listed there such as auditoriums, fraternal lodges, community centers, clubhouses and the like, and keeping in religious facilities as well. So we're not contracting, we're not granting more uses in a residential, we're actually prohibiting more uses in a residential neighborhood unless a conditional use is approved by the City Commission, which is a relatively arduous task. There are lots of requirements, just like with site plan approval that you heard tonight with the garage, that an applicant has to meet in order to obtain a conditional use from this City Commission. So we're not, we're not granting people more ability to meet in residential, we're actually prohibiting more uses than what currently exists in the code.
Understood, yeah. And I think reading it out of context was tough because, you know, to try to understand it, so, okay. With that, we've got, we've got a number of public speakers. Gustavo, you want to go first?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Gustavo Guguliano, 323 Atlantic Isle, you know, Bud, I know most of the people here, we have several residents in Atlantic Isle. I understand, sir, what you said, but the language there is not clear enough. We sent it to lawyers and all of them have come back to us saying the language is not clear. So our request here is that either the language be changed, but also including on that language that you forbid such developments, not condition them, as simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Gregory? Gregory Korchmar?
No.
Greg? No? Okay. Tom O'Connell? The other Tom's next. I saw you move, Tommy.
Thomas O'Connell, 283 Atlantic Isle, 33-year resident of Sunny Isles Beach. This is confusing. Please make it very specific. And it's my first time here and it's a nice place. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. No one says Atlantic Isle doesn't have a sense of humor, you see that? Tommy Sessa?
Hi, Tommy Sessa, 282 Atlantic Isle. Hi, Bud.
Hey, Tommy.
I got a flyer in my mailbox yesterday and the flyer said that the potential of a daycare on Atlantic Isle and/or a religious organization on Atlantic Isle, just, you know, I just thought that that, that was a little, an armpitique island, I didn't think that fit.
Yeah.
And I didn't understand the wording of the ordinance, I'm not a lawyer, but I just want to say that that wouldn't work for me.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Tommy. All right. Sue. Sue Scollatas, Sue?
Hi, Sue.
210 Atlantic Isle, Suzanne Scollatas. I too, from the moment I learned of this, was very confused by it and I don't understand why it's conditional. I think it should be prohibited, period. It's a residential, single-family community.
Yeah. Ed, are we allowed to prohibit it? I don't think we're allowed to.
Why?
That's the problem, because I think we're preempted on prohibiting it. Go ahead, Ed.
You can't just prohibit religious facilities, you have to give them an opportunity to show that they are not going to overly burden that neighborhood. So I don't believe that we have the legal authority to just prohibit them, but.
Can we find out?
Yeah.
And what about all places of public assembly? Is that, does that just include religious facilities or is that any, any public assembly, which is the.
That's, that's what, that's what the intent is, is to include all of those, to prohibit all of those uses unless they can demonstrate their entitlement to it underneath the code.
But not, not a blanket prohibition? That's a prohibit, a prohibition, in other words, it would be invalid to prohibit without any, you know, conditional.
Relief, without any relief, right?
Okay.
The relief is that you get to come and to hit all of these requirements, a site plan and, you know, a summary, an affidavit, certified survey, and then they're supposed to show that the, the operation of that use is not detrimental to or endanger the public's health, safety or welfare, that it's consistent with the community character of the immediate neighborhood of the proposed use. So those are the standards of review that the City Commission has to review in the event that someone applies. But someone can't just walk into your neighborhood, Mayor, and start up a club and have meetings as a club unless they come to the city first and obtain that conditional use.
Well, according to this, I'm reading, Gustavo just threw something in front of me, according to this regarding the child daycare center, I mean, all somebody needs is a 7,500 square foot lot.
And a conditional use permit.
And a conditional use permit.
But Sue, Sue.
That's 265. 44D. 44D, okay.
You can open a childcare if you have those conditions.
No, you can't. You have to, you have to meet these other requirements under, under section 265-13, 13.
Which are here.
13, which is conditional uses.
Yes, but for childcare, it's 44D. So if you meet that, you can't.
Let's.
This thing has to be rewritten. It has to be.
Yeah.
It is not clear.
Let's finish the, let's finish the public hearing and then we'll talk about it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sue. Okay, Rumi? Rumi, no? Okay. Fabiola, not speaking. Let's see what else I got here. Okay, that's it. Public hearing is closed. Let's talk about it. Okay, I'll go this way this time. Jennifer?
When I initially read this, I literally had the intent completely backwards. So I agree that it's confusing because I, I had it, the way I understood it, the way that it's written, I understood it completely the other way. And part of the reason that that's the case is because it's given in sort of out of context because it's referencing other parts of the code that are not here and if you don't know where to find those parts of the code, then it doesn't make sense. When I had the opportunity to then piece it together, it's like a puzzle, then I understood what, what, what the intent was and I support the intent. But perhaps part of what, what we need to do when we revise it is include, for example, like the definition of, of conditional use that wasn't in here. Claudia mentioned it in, when she presented it, but it's difficult to follow the way that it is. I, I think, I like the idea behind it, but if, if, if we agree that it's difficult to follow, then I think we should look at, perhaps listing specifically the criteria and the definitions that it references.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
My biggest question is, can we get absolute clarification on the concept of not allowing, like was requested for religious institutions, daycare and anything in a residential area? And then if I can also get clarification, please, what is considered in our city of these areas besides Golden Shores and Atlantic Isle, this Point Ciana Island, are those in that same?
That is under one of the lower residential categories, yes. It will be.
So those three.
RTH, yes. So it will be Point Ciana, Atlantic Isle, Golden Shores and the Atlantic 15 Street.
Golden Gate.
Golden Gates, correct.
Golden Gates as, as.
As a single family.
Yes.
As well. Now, the intent here is, I appreciate the intent because I know that in Golden Shores as well as in Atlantic Isle, there have been attempts to, to open up such places without even asking for permission, but I think that that's a valid question and if we don't know the answer 100% right now, I'd like to get the answer. Can we just say flat out, no, you don't even get to apply because while we might be all against it right now, maybe in the future that may change. Is that possible?
We can certainly do that between now and second reading.
I actually have similar concerns. I know we discussed it, you know, early this evening about, you know, what is conditional use and you provided me with the, with the ordinance, but for me, it's not just about, you know, the use, it's really about such criteria, the frequency of activities, the duration of the activities, what impacts will have to the surrounding area, the persons involved, traffic conditions, parking conditions, all of that criteria, which for me is not really spelled out in the definition of conditional use. It talks about a site plan, but it's more, you know, more global and for me, I'm looking for much more detailed criteria that, that would, you know, would be the basis for approving or disapproving, you know, a conditional use. For me, the language is too open-ended and I'd like much more specificity and much more, you know, much more detail, getting much more into the weeds as to what goes into the approval of a, a conditional use. And so without having those parameters, I think it's, you know, I think it's premature to be voting on something like this, so.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think it should be, you know, clarified, expanded and detailed at length.
Okay, I think we should defer because frankly, I was in the same boat as you guys. And I'm not a lawyer, we got a bunch of lawyers up here too, so, you know, and the lawyers are looking at it. So I agree with Gus and with Sue in that, let's look at what we can prohibit. I don't know that every one of those uses we can't prohibit, to your point. I know some of them we can't prohibit, you know, for instance, when we closed the dollhouse, we still had to have a zone in the city where you can have a, you know, have a strip club. And so, you know, what we did was we, frankly, we jacked around with the zoning code and made it where nobody would want to be, you know? So there's ways around these things that we can do and to your point, Gus, to make it, you know, to make it more prohibitive, you know, to make it more prohibitive, there's ways around these things that we can do. So, you know, I think to the staff, good first try, but let's go back to the drawing board and maybe, and maybe dig in a little bit harder. So Mauricio, what do we need to do to kind of pass on this? Just, no one makes a motion?
So we would need either a motion to approve it on first reading.
Because I don't want to, I want it to be able to come back modified.
Change it to a motion to defer.
Move, move to defer.
Okay, yeah. So do we hear a second to defer? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item's deferred, thank you. Thanks, you guys, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Everybody's going to home.
I know, everybody goes home now. Okay, I'll let y'all leave, see that? But thanks for sitting through my state of the city address, see? It was a great night, you know? So, you know, you can tell Atlantic Isle's a fair weather island, you know? So that's it. That's right. Norman, you're sticking around, you know, go figure. So that's it. Okay, thank you, everyone, for participating in that one. Okay, I'm going to give it two minutes and we'll kick it back in here.
Can we get water? Where do we get water?
Here, here, you can take mine. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9A, ordinances for second reading.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapter 194 entitled nuisance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach to amend section 194-2 to include the definition of nuisance as the unauthorized feeding of animals on publicly owned property, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Stan, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this is the second reading of our ordinance regulating the unauthorized feeding of animals.
Excellent. Okay, I think we hashed this one out, but any, any comments or questions?
Move, can I, you want me to move to approve or no?
Absolutely.
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Mauricio, voice vote?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, okay, that's a good one. Thank you. Okay. Item 9B.
9B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapter 104 of the code entitled art in public places to provide the city manager with instructions regarding retroactive funding of the public art fund for municipal construction projects as originally contemplated, providing for a more detailed explanation of the public art trust fund, requiring the city manager and the public arts advisory committee to recommend to the city commission a yearly budget for public art funding, providing for repealer, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. Second and final reading.
So we had a full presentation on this in our last meeting. Is there anything to add from anyone?
No.
Okay, do you hear a motion? Second?
Second.
Second, Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, we move on to resolutions. Item 10A, expenditure forfeiture funds.
A resolution authorizing the chief of police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 in accordance with section 932.7055 of the Florida statutes to expend partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice and Law Enforcement Trust Fund for costs associated with the acquisition of law enforcement accreditation and miscellaneous community policing items and charitable contributions.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. This request, as stated, is to expend partial forfeiture funds in an amount not to exceed $62,000. The funds will be utilized as the startup cost associated with acquiring police accreditation and for the expense of community policing items and our police charity.
Excellent. Any questions for the chief?
No.
Do you hear a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, chief. Item 10B.
A resolution approving the selection of United Healthcare as a provider of employee health insurance, Humana as a provider of dental insurance, IMED as a provider of vision care, Mutual of Omaha as a provider of life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, long-term disability insurance, voluntary short-term disability insurance and voluntary life insurance for a period of one year.
Chris, you going to speak to this one? I don't see a, oh, okay, Stan, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this is our annual insurance, our health insurance renewals and our health insurance renewals came in flat and we have a slight increase of up to 7%, currently at 6.9% for our dental. So we're recommending and asking for your approval.
That's a, that's an exceptional year then, very good.
Excellent.
Do we hear a motion? Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you. 10C. Thank you, Stan.
10C is a resolution approving an increase in spending authority with Calvin Giordano and Associates for the Newport Pier cleanup services.
Okay. Sylvia?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. Excuse me, as part of our permit with the state for the pier, it's required for us to do a quarterly cleanup under the pier and submit a report to the state for that. Calvin Giordano has the ability to do those services. It requires a scuba diver, so this is for those monies. The request is because, obviously, we have other agreements with them in other departments.
Understood. Any questions?
Just, I have a question.
Yes.
Just for clarification, because I love this one. What is it that we're cleaning up under there, so that everyone in the audience knows why you would even need a scuba diver to go down there?
He goes down there and collects trash. It's typically a lot of fishing wire, sometimes some strange things like clothing attire, and actually, I think, once they found a piece of a bicycle tire, so, all of the trash underneath the pier.
And is any of this offset by the price to enter the pier by the fishermen?
Is it offset by that?
Yeah.
Minimally?
Minimally, but...
Yes.
It's the cost of owning a pier.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, as piers go. Okay. Any other questions? Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, Sylvia. Item 10D.
A resolution approving a fourth amendment to the agreement with O'Leary Richards Design and Associates, Inc. for the Landscape Architects Services.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, in 2016, we went out to bid, and we selected Kathy O'Leary Richards Design Associates for our in-house landscape services. That includes zoning plan review and some minor projects that we have, as well as monthly inspections of our many pieces of landscaping and parks and right-of-ways. So, this is to continue with one more year. We'll have one more renewal after that.
Understood. Any questions?
No.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10E.
A resolution approving a conceptual plan by O'Leary Richards Design Associates for the Meditation Garden at Town Center Park.
Okay, so, since you approved using Kathy a little bit more. Last year, she did a design for us. As you may know, the Public Art Advisory Committee has had a desire to redo the skate park into an art park. That turned into a meditation garden, once we received that piece of art that you see up there. That was from the muse. So, just a quick overview. The PAC has seen this, they like it, and this is where we are. So, that's Town Center Park. We're talking about the area to the left, that little skate park area. It has already been excavated, so it's just kind of grass now. You'll see in a minute. We did lose a considerable amount of the park, when we had to add mangroves to that area, as part of the mangrove mitigation for the pedestrian emergency bridge. So, that little shaded, the light gray area, is what we lost to the new mangroves. The green area is what we have to use now. It's .4 acres. This is the existing entrance. This is the little building that we have there right now. That was the beginning of the skate park. Those little black things you see at the top is the existing shade structure, which will remain. That is from that area you just saw, but looking a little north and west. So, it abouts Winston Towers, 600. That's looking directly west. That's looking west from a little further south. That's looking back east. Back east. This is the west end of the park, which those crossbars that you see will be removed in this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
In this plan. And I'm stuck. Okay. That's that same one looking west. So, this is the new plan. This is the new design. Did I skip one? No. Really quick, when you come in from the east, that first area will be a plaza area. That orangish-looking circle is the, it'll just be a plaza area. It will be under a shade cover. Then, if you follow that path through, you'll see the very first art piece is that little circle at the bottom of the picture, which is the south side. That's where the muse art piece will go. And then, if you follow that around to the west, that's a reflecting pond with a piece of artwork that will be purchased after that.
Very nice.
Trees, benches, and everything else. So, this just shows the different elements, the pathway, the landscaping, and then where the art treatments will be. And these are just some inspirational images, so you get a feel for what they're thinking. That's the reflecting pond. These are examples of what we would do with the water. This is how we would treat those poles that would be left, so that they don't look like poles. They'll look like landscaped art. An example of a shade cover that could go over the first area, that building that you see on the bottom, would be covered in some nice wood to make it more natural-looking. And this is some example of site furnishing. And the pavement would be a natural paver look. And that's all we have. So, if you are all agreeable with this conceptual design, we'll go out to bid. For design. Out to bid for design of the real...
Understood. So, we'll have a quiet place in Sunny Isles Beach. Is that a misnomer?
Yes.
Any questions for Susan?
I know it's a rough sketch. My only comment internally, which I'll state here publicly, is I'm hoping that we'll have enough benches and enough seating arrangements. I don't, it's hard to see from this sketch that we have enough, and, you know, we don't have a lot in Gateway, and I'm hoping that we'll have adequate seating, because this is really for that purpose. For a meditation garden, you should have adequate seating.
I believe there was like 10 benches around the westernmost.
That's correct.
And then, the other ones throughout.
Yeah, I, since you brought that up on beginning of the week, yeah, I've been looking with a magnifying glass, and I can count the benches on here.
Good.
So, there are at least...
Because if it's meditation, we need seats.
Need places to sit and reflect.
The lawn area also would be available for, you know, throw a blanket and...
Yeah. We just don't want it to be another soccer field, that's all.
Right.
So, okay.
Excellent.
Anybody else?
I have some things.
Okay, Marissa?
First of all, thank you for putting in the inspirational photos. I thought that it was very important that everyone sees that has not been a part of this conversation, because the PAC has been discussing this for quite some time, and everyone else needs to see. It's not going to be like our regular parks. It's going to be really very inspirational and meditative. And just to get clarification on the record, this is for adults.
This is for adults. The only children that would be permitted is if they were with an adult. So, and, you know, if there was a special event or something that we would have there, like an art class for children or something, we'd use it for that at that time. But, no, it will not just be open for free play for the children.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment. So, there's a lot of mosquitoes back there.
Yes.
So, obviously, we're going to have to take care of that, and make sure that we fumigate accordingly.
So, we do have our...
So, we can meditate.
We do have a mosquito treatment plan.
Yeah, I know, we do, yeah.
And it does include that area.
Yeah.
And that's part of why that reflecting pond, we'll have bubblers, because we don't want anything stagnant water.
Okay. Great, great. Thank you.
All right, that got more debate than the parking garage.
No. Jennifer had...
I didn't want to make the comment. I love, I love how we went from skateboard park that was driving everybody crazy to meditation. That's a nice, that's, well, you know, they have their place in Hallover now, so, that's a nice full circle. I'm sure that people in Winston Towers appreciate it.
Yes.
That was a, yeah, that was a bony contention for a few years.
And a little update, that park has reopened just last week. The skate park at Hallover has been reopened.
Yeah, they were working on it, so. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, then, Alex, you can make the motion.
Make the motion.
Do we hear a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Susan. So, that's a nice one. And thanks to the PAC. The PAC did a nice job, I think, reviewing that, and the PAC's been very effective, so I want to, again, publicly thank the Arts Committee for their consideration. Item 10F.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 2019-2990 relating to the appointment of voting committee members to the City Advisory Committee.
Stan?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, at our last meeting, you directed us to revise this item and bring it back to you, to indicate that the board can choose members or their potential candidates, not, in addition to the list that we have.
Right.
You can choose whoever you want, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, good.
So, really, there's two parts. Some of you have, so we need approval for that, and then some of you have provided me with, or us with, names, and some of you have chosen not to. So, if you would like to provide a name, you would like to hear that tonight.
Okay.
If not, you can do that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments?
Motion to approve and to modify.
I had a question for Stan, actually.
Jennifer, your mic.
Always. Stan, with, how is this different from where we were a year ago, like, before we made any changes? I feel like we've gone full circle. How different is this from where we started?
It wasn't my choice. I was looking at Ed, but it looks like I'm going to respond. Essentially, it's the same.
That's as confusing as a conditional use.
It wasn't my choice, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Marissa?
Yeah, you know, and I've spoken to Stan about this. I just, I didn't give you names, because I just don't think that this is a very effective way of getting the residents involved. As we mentioned with the PAC, it's got a very specific purpose, and now we've got residents that have created their own groups, condo group, pedestrian safety group, parks group, and that's the reason I didn't give you the names. It's not that I forgot. I just, this is, I don't know, I think that's what Commissioner Viscara was saying, I don't really see the difference of what has happened in the past, and we haven't had this for a year, and it doesn't seem to have made a difference at all. And the biggest reservation is the rules that are associated with that, what I've expressed before, the sunshine issue, and getting a quorum, and the amount of staff required to maintain these meetings, and then potentially not even have a meeting if people don't show up, because it's a voluntary position.
Yeah.
That's my long explanation as to why I didn't give you names.
Okay. Yes.
Well, I think that we made it, we had a consensus, and we reached a consensus that we were going to move forward with the CAC. So, if you don't want to make your appointments, I'll be happy to take yours and make some of my own. I have plenty of people that would love to serve in this capacity. If you don't want, if you don't want to use your spots, I'll be happy to take them.
And, Mayor, just point of clarification, because this came up in some of our discussions, and I discussed it with the city attorney, but our code is clear that there cannot be additional appointments made by each member of the commission.
Yeah.
Mayor has two, and the others...
Yeah, so, let's get through the restructuring, and then, I think, this coming month, we can, folks want to make appointments, they can make appointments. If they don't want to make appointments, they don't have to make appointments, so...
Okay. But, you know, I wanted a different format and a larger, more inclusive, and, you know, we agreed that we were going to do it, and now, we're changing a little bit the, you know, what we decided, so I think that's a little...
I also think, like, in the case of Ella and Warren's group, it was nice to not have to worry about sunshine. We sat down, we had a conversation, I think we cut through it very quickly. You know, I mean, we had a couple of meetings, and boom, here we are. I mean, I know, no, but my point is, it was an efficient process, it wasn't a cumbersome process. So, you know, sunshine, sunshine has got its positives and its negatives. I mean, there's more positives and negatives. I could question that sometimes, but Norman's shaking his head as usual, because we, you know, I mean, the sunshine law sometimes can be burdensome, but the fact is, is I think in this case, it, you know, it's really worked. But, okay, but let's get, let's get through the, that we know what the structure is, and then we can deal with the appointments, you know, in the aftermath. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Item 10G.
Are we making our appointments?
You can if you want. You can if you want. I was just going to say, I'm going to talk to Stan this month, because I wanted, because I actually hadn't been thinking about it, because I know it went through these machinations and stuff.
Are you making yours?
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Martha Surby.
And I'd like to appoint Robin Chickley.
Great. Okay. And Stan, I'll talk to you during the month, so...
Thank you.
We might have to just tee him up next month. Okay. Speaking of boards, item 10G.
10G is a resolution approving appointments to the Historic Preservation Board for calendar years 2020 and 2021. Mayor, this is for, like it says, the Historic Preservation Board.
Yep.
I have the appointments. We just didn't, weren't able to include them in the resolution, but I'll read them into the record. We have Ari Steiger as a chairperson, Deondre Monaco, Stephen Hildrew, Warren Stam, Igor Vassilia, and Rumiana Grossdanova, and Fabiola Stupison. Total of seven members.
Okay, perfect. And just so everybody, this board meets ad hoc, because some years, there's nothing to meet over. If I decide to paint my house, there's a meeting, so that's always thrilling for me. So, any questions regarding the historic board?
Yeah. Maricia, can you just clarify what the difference is? Because I want to make sure that people understand that this is a very specific board, and what happens if we don't do anything, and...
So, the purpose of this board is basically how it says in its name. It's a Historic Preservation Board. They meet to consider any properties in the city that should be designated as a historic site. We need to have this board, because if not, then that whole process of them going to We need to have this board, because if not, then that whole process of them going to apply, for instance, in the case of the mayor, he would need to go to the county to obtain those permits and permission. This allows us to do it here in the city.
So when we became a city, we took over the responsibilities from the county, and we have our own historic board. And we've got a, we only have a handful of historically designated properties, but the ones that are here, and then if we consider a property in the future, that comes before this board, or any, anytime something, anytime a historic designated property comes in for a permit for anything, has to go before the historic board for, for a, again, it's a use permit, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion approved?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10H.
10H is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill 182, which would repeal the preemption of local laws regarding the use or sale of polystyrene products.
Okay. Dana, this one's you.
Okay, I know the meeting's gone very long, so try to condense my comments. I'd like to really acknowledge my colleagues on the commission for approving the ordinance that, you know, bans straws. I think it's the first step in our journey towards, you know, greater environmental consciousness and commitment, but it's the start and it's not the finish. As a coastal city, we have to be very proactive. We've had this, we've established this e-committed platform. We're really focused on things like reusable water bottles, and electric charging stations, and beach cleanups, and so forth. But we continue to evolve and do more to address issues of pollution and biodegradability and so forth, and sustainability. And really, where this gets bogged down is really in Tallahassee. So what Tallahassee has done over time is they've basically preempted or prevented the municipalities from regulating from within their jurisdictional limits. So under state law, which this bill, this proposed bill by Senator Stewart addresses, is the bill is to redact or repeal the provisions that prevent or preclude the municipalities from prohibiting or restricting the use of single-use plastics, polystyrene, styrofoam. So basically, the language is this in the state bill. Until such time that the legislature adopts the recommendations of the department, that's the Department of Environmental Protection, no local government, local government agency, or state government agency may enact any rule, regulation, or ordinance regarding use, disposition, sale, prohibition, restriction, or tax of such auxiliaries, containers, wrappings, or disposable plastic bags. And also, under the Florida statutes, the current law is that regulation of polystyrene products, styrofoam, preempted, is preempted to the department. The regulation of the use or sale of polystyrene products by entities regulated under this chapter is preempted to the department. There's a grandfather provision, but essentially, as a city, we can't do anything. And I want to just read an excerpt about home rule that was just in the Miami Herald yesterday by a commissioner in Coral Springs. What is home rule? Home rule is defined as a municipality's ability to establish its own form of government through its charter and to enact ordinances, codes, plans, and resolutions without prior state approval. Simply stated, local governments were given the authority to work in the best interests of their constituents and cities. After all, local elected officials are closest to and tuned in with the people who voted them into office. Local officials talk to voters at the grocery store, at Little League games, after commission and board meetings, at restaurants, basically everywhere the local official goes within their district or municipality. However, these conversations often end with the statement of, "I'm sorry, I can't help you because the state has prevented us from taking action on this matter." So basically, what state preemption does is, it states, no matter how much we want to, as a city, and as a governing body, or as the populace, to put a clamp on the scourge of pollution, of plastics that are invading our landfills, non-biodegradable, that are invading our coastline, our beaches, no matter what we want to do at the city level, we are preempted by the state because these types of statutes are in place. And what this bill attempts to do is say, "We redact that, so let home rule exist, and let cities do what's best for their cities," which is, in this case, to be able to regulate the use of single-use plastics and polystyrene and styrofoam. So I urge my fellow commissioners, I urge the city, to really embrace this idea, because it's about home rule, and it's also about protecting our environment, protecting our cities, and having the ability to do so at the local level.
Thank you. Any comments? Alex, anybody?
No, I agree.
Yeah? Jennifer?
Exactly right.
Yeah, I agree. Any bill that protects...
Yeah, good, good.
Sorry, Alex. Anything that protects home rule, you know, this is something that I personally have been involved in. We've go up to Tallahassee, been up to DC, and regardless of what it is regarding, and certainly the environment is very important, the fact of the matter is, is that we and the people of the city need to decide what's best for us and not up there in Tallahassee. So, yes.
So I'm gonna also support it, support the idea of protecting home rule. The one thing I want, I'm gonna caution, I got it with both barrels from our restaurant owners about the straws, because we really didn't give them a phase-in period to speak of, and it turns out that the paper straws are about five times the price of plastic straws. And so I got a, you know, actually, one of them just texted me today and sent me the list of the cost of paper cups versus plastic cups or polystyrene cups. So the only thing I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm against, obviously, protecting the environment, but I'm saying is, is that in the future, when we do these kind of things, and I voted for the straws, you know, I supported the straw ordinance, but in the future, when we do these types of things, I think we need to, we need to assess the impact on the business and then give a phase-in period for the businesses, so they can, so they can absorb that cost, because it is a material cost, there's no doubt, the difference. I don't think any of them had a big problem with the concept of it, but, but it was like we flipped the switch, and all of a sudden, you know, their expenses went up. So with that, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10A. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we had a public speaker. Oh, I'm so sorry. I have one public speaker on 10H.
I think Stan wanted some comments.
Okay. Catherine Uden? I'm gonna open it back up. I'm so sorry, Catherine. We're here listening to ourselves today instead of... Okay, thanks for coming. How are you?
Thank you for having me. Good evening, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Goldman. That was beautifully stated, and I feel your same frustration, because I'm a resident here of South Florida. My name's Catherine Uden, and I'm the Southeast Florida Campaign Organizer for Oceana, volunteering on ocean issues for a long time here in South Florida. And, you know, we have a huge problem with plastic. I'm here in support of Senate Bill 182. I'm gonna be going to Tallahassee on February 4th in order to support this bill. Plastic pollutes from the time it's extracted from the earth as fossil fuels. As of 2015, we were producing 400 million tons of plastic annually. Plastic production is expected to quadruple by 2050. Only 9% of the plastic produced has been recycled, and only 2% of plastic is effectively recycled into something of equal or higher value. The Florida State Legislature has increasingly restricted the ability of local municipalities to reduce single-use plastics by passing preemption laws. Local governments should have the right to make their own decisions about the regulation of single-use plastic, because their communities are directly affected when plastic clogs their storm drains and contaminates their coastlines. These cities are also bearing the cost of managing plastic waste, so they should also have the authority to regulate it. Plastics are flooding our oceans, and we need to step up. Marine species are being harmed by plastic debris, and plastic is entering our food chain. Of Florida's most valuable assets is the ocean that surrounds it, which drives the state seafood and tourism industry. By protecting our coastlines, Florida is protecting its economy and the livelihood of its residents. More than 450 cities and counties in seven states, as well as entire nations, have banned, passed bag bans or put fees on plastic bags with incredibly successful results. Communities should be able to protect the coastlines that support them. Local communities should have a say in the plastics crisis, and we need to give them power to be part of the solution. And if you're interested, I know that there's a lot of frustration about the preemptions, we actually have examples of model ordinances that you can pass that would survive any legal challenges and work around those preemptions if you're interested, and I can help you with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, Stan.
I'm sorry, I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing, that in terms of the plastic straw ban, we are using a phased approach.
Good.
So we have not issued any formal citations. We've visited some of the businesses, asked that they work with us.
Good.
And we're trying to work with them to phase out their existing stock.
Yeah, I think next time, what I'd like to see is just give them a heads up, they may want to come in and talk about it. We kind of, the last one, we kind of just, you know, did it, and it was fine. I, you know, I don't regret what we did, but I also realize that it created a burden on them, and we didn't really give them any runway to come in and discuss it.
But we had a, didn't we send out notices to all the stakeholders, and then none of the businesses showed up? To even, we had a discussion, I thought we did.
I think we had a discussion in the commission meeting. I don't know that we...
No, no, we did. Ed or Chris, didn't we send out letters? And it wasn't a discussion about, didn't we give everybody notice, ample notice about that?
Yeah, they didn't tell me that. They, you know, they told me they didn't know about it.
Well, you had, you had said it, and you basically said, "Oh, well, what about," I said, "Well, what about the residents?" You said, "What about the business owners?" So we sent out notices, and then nobody showed up to even contest it. So it's been going on.
I personally called some of the larger businesses, and so they said, they said they were anticipating it already.
Okay. Well, you know, they might have been trying me out for sizing. So, anyway.
And then, and a lot of, and several had already adapted to it before, so...
Some did, yeah.
So it's a consciousness.
But the point is, the point is, is I think it's not just our opinion. There's a balance of opinions, and again, I'm all for the environment, but I want to make sure that we take everybody's opinion into consideration, so... Okay. Item 10A.
A resolution strongly opposing Senate Bill 1128, which seeks to preempt the regulation of short-term rentals to the state.
Okay. Body.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, basically, Commissioner Goldman, you have said, "We don't want to tell the residents of Sunny Isles Beach, I'm sorry, we don't want to help you." So that's why we are opposing the Senate bill that basically is going to preempt us for what we had already established within the regulations for the short-term rentals. As you can see on the board, and I don't know if it's going to be pulled out on the TVs, we have been able to reduce, basically, the units that they are advertising, actively advertising on different platforms. We have been able to reduce approximately 600 active advertisements, and we have been able to license more than 50% of the current units that they are doing short-term rentals. If Senate Bill 1128 is must-pass, we are going to be preempted on doing that regulations that we're currently doing. We believe that we have run a successful program, and we would like to continue doing it, because we believe that the quality of the residents of the city has been improved in a certain manner.
Body, can you, would you mind turning that this way, so then people that can't see the screen can see it? Because we've seen it, so maybe, so that everyone there can see it.
When we initiated the program, we had approximately 2,000 active units advertising in different platforms. There are hundreds of platforms, actually, advertisement we contract out with a third party. They are doing the hard labor to basically check what units, trying to identify the full addresses, so we can contact them and licensing proper, license them properly.
Okay. How's that for timing?
That was good.
Okay.
It would be, it would be a great, great shame, and a great, great injustice to our municipalities throughout the state if we were preempted from regulating Airbnb, which has such huge, huge impacts to all of the property owners and residents, and it would be just a huge injustice, and we have to really push hard. Every city like ours has to push hard to have the ability to continue to regulate this, the activities of Airbnb.
Yeah, it's the same issue. Yeah. It's the same issue on preemption. The state will, the state will try to take away whatever they can take away from us, the county will try to take away. I mean, we're constantly fighting these types of issues, because I think they know better. You know, just, the state legislature isn't subject to the sunshine law, and we are. You know, so I mean, that another one, that one always burns me to no end, I can tell you. You know, you know, they're all-knowing and all-seeing, so they can go make backroom deals, you know? So that's always been very frustrating. But, but this is a very, this is very typical in the hierarchy of government. You know, the larger government thinks that it knows better than, you know, than the local government, and they try to, and then, but also, the larger government is driven a lot more by big-time lobbying. So clearly, you know, you have folks like Airbnb, and, you know, VBRO get into the state level, and spending enough money to basically get their attention, so...
Can I?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just, I wanted to add that Catherine Matos and the city manager wrote a letter that's actually being used right now by the Florida League of Cities to be passed around to the rest of the members, so they can send it up to Tallahassee. This has unfortunately already passed the committee, so it's not looking very good. But for those of you that would like to get more information and would like to send something to our representatives, that would be Pizzo and Geller, we can get that information to you. But it really is very important that anyone that feels strongly about this get involved, because right now, while I love the fact that we are, you know, opposing this, it doesn't look good. So this may very well pass.
Yeah.
But the effort that has been put in by staff is really incredible, and we have been much more active in Tallahassee to make sure that we are able to do what we need to do for the residents, so that they're not telling us what to do, and I just want to commend Chris and Catherine for that. Thank you.
Yeah, the other piece of it is oftentimes, we, when we pass our own ordinances or our own resolutions, we, and then they come afterwards and preempt something we're grandfathered in. So it always pays to kind of do something upfront sometimes, because ultimately, you know, depends upon how the preemption language, you know, plays out. You know, you know, we end up getting, we end up getting the benefit of taking action, so...
Right.
Jennifer?
If this is successful, we are looking potentially at getting plowed down in terms of what we've been able to accomplish so far, but I'm, I'm of the belief that it's not over till it's over, so you have a, we have a fight ahead of us, and we have to fight it. If we ultimately end up, you know, with the state taking away, winning this battle, all of this is gonna fall back on the residents. And it takes us again to that conversation that we were having last month about, about the condos and the boards and all of this. Residents are gonna have to roll up their sleeves, organize, you should be doing it anyway, you know, but, but in the absence of the city being able to regulate these things, it's really gonna fall back on, on the owners of the units, and in organizing and getting some good boards in place, so, because the state won't take that away. So it will, you still keep the power, it just would preempt us from helping you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, to Jennifer's point, if you could organize, write your local representatives, Joe Geller, our representative, and Senator Pizzo, because the politicians in Tallahassee, they're relentless. Every year, they try to take away our home rule, okay? They try to take our rights to kind of, you know, have local solutions for our municipalities. And I'm afraid they're gonna keep chipping away, chipping away, and then pretty soon, we're gonna have, just our quality of life is gonna be, you know, affected by them taking over. So we don't want that. So if you could help us out and write to these, to Tallahassee, write to your local representatives, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. We already did 10J. Item 10K.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager or designate to petition the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, Division of Land Sales, Condominiums, and Mobile Homes, to certify an arbitrator to perform arbitrations pursuant to Florida Statute 718, 1255, within the city of Sunny Isles Beach. To further petition the DBPR to have representatives of Florida's Office of Condominium Ombudsman provide monthly services within the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Okay, Chris?
So based on the direction that was given by the commission during...
Hello, you're killing him, hello.
Based upon the direction given by the commission at the last meeting, a resolution was prepared by the city attorney directing me to petition the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation to do two things. Certify a lawyer to act as an arbitrator for the purposes of conducting arbitration hearings pursuant to Florida statutes, and the resolution further authorizes and directs the manager to petition the DBPR to have a representative of the Office of the Condominium Ombudsman provide services within our city on at least a monthly basis.
Very good. Okay, so we have a public hearing? I'm gonna open the public hearing. Warren?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Commissioner's staff, for the record. My name is Warren Stam, with an address at 16001 Collins Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. I am here on behalf of the Sunny Isles Beach Condo Owners Unity Coalition. First and foremost, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to thank the staff for your commitment to the veteran of our city and consideration and adoption of this resolution which is before you. By way of brief background, and to put this all in perspective, Chapter 718 was enacted in recognition of the disadvantages that individual unit owners have when in dispute or litigating against an association, a board, a property manager, or a management company. In an attempt to equalize the playing field, they created Section 718, 1255, to provide an alternative dispute resolution and arbitration between condo residents and their boards, associations, and management. While this is all well and good, the fact remains that there are thousands of condominium associations registered in the state of Florida, spread out over 67 counties. The DBPR has jurisdiction over all of these. As a result, the state is understaffed and overburdened, resulting in the limited enforcement of Chapter 718. While I appreciate the plight of the state, its agencies, and the issues facing other condominium unit owners, my primary concern, and by passage of this resolution, your primary concern, are the condominium unit owners, as well as all residents of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. As set forth in the proposed resolution, there are over 100 condominiums located in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Inclusive in this number are in excess of 41 condominium associations with more than 150 units each. Even at the minimum number of 150, this class alone represents 12,000 unit owner residents/voters. Adding in another 39 condominiums, and you have a significant contingency of residents that this resolution would provide recourse to. Coupled with the fact that the city of Sunny Isles Beach alone, since 2017, there have been over 24 complaints filed against association managers that have been adjudicated by Tallahassee for abuses against associations and unit owners. These are just managers who have CAM licenses and does not account for those that are not licensed. Is there a problem? Yes. Is there a solution? Yes. Is the resolution before you this evening the solution? It's a start. There was discussion at the last commission meeting about objections to Commissioner Goldman's proposed ordinance. While it did not pass, it paved the way for this discussion, dialogue, and concerns raised by this commission and those residents who spoke in favor and opposition to the ordinance. The major objections were twofold. First was the alleged burden of taxing the association staff, and subsequently, the city staff, in gathering and storing documentation collected in a registry. Second was the alleged intrusion and potential disclosure of information about the individual condominiums. condominiums and how they operate. The first objection is without merit in that all condominium documents are now electronic and storage is not an issue. Additionally, as pointed out by our city attorney at the last meeting, can now be ADA-compliant. The second objection is equally without merit in that all condominium documents and filings are of public record and are subject to public records requests of the state, and any unit owner within the association can at any time, upon proper notice requested of the association, review the documentation. The resulting fact is that there is no additional burden or exposure to the association over and above that which is already in place. It's also interesting to note that the objections that are being raised are either by individual board members or who are in disputes with their associations, or by managers and management companies, not by unit owners. Additionally, it is not the intention of the Sunny Isles Beach Condo Owners Unity Coalition led by my colleague Ella Kalish, individual unit owners, nor any other group, to burden the city administration, but rather to work in conjunction with the state of Florida, the DBPR, and the Division of Condominiums to help ensure that the provisions and protections of Chapter 718 are enforced. The passage of this resolution achieves a number of goals, the main one being to serve the interests of all residents of the city. But more importantly, it provides direction to the city manager to take action, to work with the state and city staff in certifying an attorney for legal arbitrator to conduct hearings on a local level to protect the residents of our city in compliance with Florida statute. Is arbitration the ultimate answer? No. But just like this resolution, it's a start. The scope and nature of the arbitration process and procedures to be followed need to be coordinated between the city and the state. We are one of the most affluent cities in the state with tens of billions of dollars of real estate value and contributing tax base. We've been a leader in providing quality of life standards for our residents. This is a critical opportunity for this commission and city government to hear and address the needs of its residents. It's an opportunity once again for our city to be at the forefront of municipal governance. Again, this resolution is a start, not a finish, but it's a step in the right direction. By passing this resolution and giving the city staff the opportunity to work with the state and residents to provide the necessary redress through the arbitration process, it will not be long before this resolution is expanded and turns into law. Thereafter, our city will not be the city of sea and sun, but rather will become the city of sun, sea, and service. On behalf of the residents of Sunny Isles Beach, I respectfully request that you pass this Resolution 10K. It's a great beginning. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Nice. Okay. Art Weissman? Art?
Hello, Commissioners. I have not spoken in front of...
Art, just say your name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah. Art Weissman, Winston Tower, 700, Unit 1212. I haven't spoken in front of the commission since Dave Sampson was mayor and I was helping him with putting the city together.
You don't look that old, Art.
This building was not even built, and we were looking at the plans and approving them, and it was an exciting time. I'm here tonight because I just heard in our building that the management of our building, our duly-elected officers, have put in place for the 40-year inspection an engineering company, and they said that it will cost each of us, well, the gross amount, they said, could go up to $15, $1,5 million for the repairs, plus any overages that they might discover. And naturally, the people at the meeting said, what's wrong with the building? Is it falling into the bay, or is there structural problems? What's the problem? Oh, no, it's just maintenance, our balconies have problems, we'll probably need new railings, et cetera. Okay, we did that 20 years ago. Not new railings, but we completely fixed it up, and it was inspected by a structural engineer each and every balcony. The entire building signed off on by valid structural engineers. It was all done, including the pool deck, et cetera, for $1.3 million. So I didn't see how we got to $15 million and starting and counting. So as much as I enjoy being here and listening to what's going on in the city, I have better personal uses for my time, but I could not sit by. I'm an engineer myself. I was with NASA for many years. We did many damage assessments, and this offends me as a professional to hear the presentation that I heard at our condominium. And I think in light of the ombudsman, yes, we could use any help we can get because I don't deal with Tallahassee, although someone in our building has, and they were here for the last election. One of the problems we had with the last election was with internet voting, which was brand-new. We finally got how to manage the paper ballots because, well, I won't get into it, to make sure that the paper ballots were valid. And they did okay with that, but when Tallahassee was asked, how do we audit and make sure that the internet voting, the totals we were given are valid, we did not get a good answer. So it would be nice to have someone, you know, once a week or once a month in the city, an ombudsman, to ask these questions to, instead of me having to come and take up all your time with these individual condominium problems, which I know you're swamped with. And so I intend to get some people together, and hopefully we can hire a structural engineer to review what has been done already and see if it makes any sense for a $15 million assessment, which would mean for each person $40,000 for an average unit, which is quite an assessment for a building that has no structural problems. Basically, we knew about the railings being brought up to code, et cetera. So if anybody knows a good structural engineer, I'm here, and I'd like to get a number. If anybody knows an internet voting consultant who can help us audit the votes to make sure that, you know, it's properly done, that would be great. These are questions, like I say, I could ask an ombudsman if he was here. And I won't take up your time with anything else. This is what I have to say.
Thank you, Art. Thanks for coming. Okay, very nice. Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what he said. So I'm not familiar with internet voting for condominiums, but in my building, when I was in the board, we brought in an approved DBPR monitor, okay? He was there, sitting there, making sure that...
He had that, I believe.
Huh?
That's what he's saying. That's what they had.
Okay. So and then regarding the $15 million assessment, I would request the budget that they put together. You have a right to request that document. And then also see the bids or the proposals from these construction companies. Request those too, and sit with someone from the board or the manager to go over that.
Dana?
Are we coming? Is that... Any more?
No, 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 that's... I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed.
So I'd like to really applaud, give a shout-out to Ella, to Warren for the hard work and the effort and the collaboration that they put into putting this initiative together. It obviously is a great pleasure of mine to see that the discussion of last month was ultimately a catalyst for moving forward. I meet or, you know, speak with residents on a daily basis about, you know, condo and so on and so forth, and it's wonderful to see that we're going to add resources in the city to help unit owners with some of their issues. What I do want to clarify a little bit, because this is a little bit in my wheelhouse, that while it is true that arbitration is another platform to resolve disputes, that this particular resolution, and again, I got some feedback from residents earlier in the week, that a dispute that is subject to arbitration is somewhat narrowly defined, and that the city itself, we don't have a separate enforcement or regulatory scheme that governs condominium disputes. So if you had a dispute with your board member in your association over something like a breach of fiduciary duty, it's not as if you can come now to City Hall with the adoption of this resolution and then all of a sudden get an arbitrator to hear that. So I just wanted to clarify a little bit that it is a starting place and an important step to have arbitration and to have some representative from the ombudsman office assuming that they will go for it, but a dispute under Chapter 718, not under our city code, but under 718, this is what it is as defined in the Condominium Act. A dispute means any disagreement between two or more parties that involves the authority of the Board of Directors under Chapter 718 or association document to require any unit owner to take any action or not take any action involving that owner's unit or the appurtenances thereto, alter or add to a common area or element, the failure of a governing body when required by this chapter or an association document to properly conduct elections, give adequate notice of meetings or other actions, properly conduct meetings, allow inspection of books and records, a plan of termination pursuant to 718, 117. So what a dispute does not entail, so it's not as if an arbitrator in the city can really arbitrate a dispute that involves any disagreement that primarily involves title to any unit or common element, the interpretation or enforcement of any warranty, the levy of a fee or assessment, or the collection of an assessment levied against a party, the eviction or other removal of a tenant from a unit, alleged breaches of fiduciary duty by one or more directors, or claims for damages to a unit based upon the alleged failure of the association to maintain the common elements or condominium property. So what this means is there's a small basket of items that can be subject to arbitration. So it's wonderful that the city is now going to have, if this is adopted, a venue for arbitration of disputes, but it's not a one-size-fits-all. Certainly, if there are complaints that are lodged against an association, you know, under Chapter 718, they could still be under unit owner resolution guidelines, they would still have to be filed to the DBPR directly, and they have a separate investigative arm for that purpose. So I just wanted to clarify that point here in the city, what it can and cannot do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jennifer?
I agree that this is a good starting point. I think we all received an email from a resident who said, well, I'm uncomfortable with us being the experimental guinea pig, but on the other side of the coin is, well, we could be trailblazers, right? And we don't really know which definition we're going to fall under until we see how it plays out. And because of that, I think it's important that we do things incrementally so that we don't jump in and then end up that we were the unfortunate guinea pig as opposed to the trailblazer. But I think that this is an excellent starting point. I think we need to maximize the state's role here in this case, and, you know, like I said last month, streamline it, facilitate it, make it as easy as possible for the state to be here and to do its job before we insert the city in the middle of it. And I think this is a very good start.
Vice Mayor?
First of all, I want to say thank you to Art for coming and speaking. I know that you were very hesitant, and I appreciate that you came and that you waited this long. Ella, you're used to speaking. You guys are all used to who spoke, and it's a lot harder when you haven't done it since Mayor Sampson was here. So thank you, Art, for doing that. And I agree with the rest of my colleagues that this is a good start, and while it certainly isn't a fix for everything, I think what it does is that it empowers people so that at the very least you know that someone has your back. They may not be able to do everything for you, but someone's going to be able to assist you at the very least once a month. Obviously, we'd need to iron out, you know, what the costs are and exactly what we're providing as far as office space and that sort of thing. But, you know, this isn't going to fix everything, and you don't necessarily want it to fix everything because you own your building, you own your property. You don't want the government coming in and telling you exactly what you're going to do. You want to have some freedom to be able to manage that, and if you make it too restrictive, you're not going to have anybody volunteering to be on your boards. So yes, this is a very good start, and thank you for coming and initiating this, and for everyone else that's here in support of this. Thank you.
So I think that, like most things we do, it's going to be an evolutionary process. So for instance, we talked about our short-term rentals. We passed an ordinance, we found a hole in it, we fixed it. Okay? It's the same thing. So, you know, not diminishing the laundry list of things it doesn't do. There's a lot of things it does do. Okay? And then if we find that, you know, there's, I think, if we start to look at the issues and we stratify the issues that we're seeing, if we find that we're not meeting certain issues, but we can still engineer to meet those issues, I'm sure we'll look at it and we'll deal with it. So I think that that's really the, you know, from my perspective, right now we have nothing. You know, we have nothing. We don't have a support mechanism. And so, you know, while I don't begrudge projecting forward, but I think that let's focus on what we got. Let's let folks start using the mechanism. Let's see what comes before us, and then let's see what works and what's not working. And then obviously, if it's not working, you know, we can course correct as we move down the path. But Warren, you know, great speech, and I applaud your, we're getting half a loaf, we're going to get a few more loaves after that. I appreciate that. But again, you know, to yours and Ella's credit, I just like when stuff comes out of our citizens. I mean, because, you know, y'all are on the front lines. I live in a house. I lived in a condo, you know, so I suffered the condo stuff years ago, you know. But the fact is, is that y'all are on the front lines, and I'm glad that this kind of percolated up from y'all. Okay, with that, I will take a motion.
I'll move.
Okay. I got a second? All in favor? Aye. All right, congratulations, you guys. Thank you. Good job.
Great job.
Okay. Okay. Nine o'clock. We were making bets on how long this one would be today. Okay, 10L.
A resolution adopting a procedure for placement of legislative items by city commissioner on city commission agenda.
Okay. So what this one is, is that right now, any of us can just kind of put something on the agenda, have the staff go through the hoops, you know, for an ordinance, for a resolution, for what have you. And then a lot of times, we walk into the meeting sometimes cold because we can't talk to each other about something. So we're putting something on the agenda that hadn't been socialized. Staff's got to do all the work to do that, comes to the meeting, and then it turns out a whole bunch of us didn't want it. Okay? So what I'm suggesting is that we have a discussion item amongst us before we have something that one of us is going to proffer onto the agenda, and that way, staff gets direction. I think the commission, the proffering commissioner can get a little bit more clarity from his colleagues what may work or what may not work. I just think it's better for all of us. So any discussion on that?
I have.
I have discussion.
Okay. All right. Good. Vice Mayor?
In addition to that, I think that it also follows, I think, the path that we've really been taking this year, which is transparency. If you have it as a discussion item, it allows the public to hear it before there's any vote and to give their input as well. So I think that's a great idea.
So we can clean it up?
Makes it easier for us.
Okay. Dana?
So Ed, we didn't have really the option to speak a little bit, you know, earlier this week, but, you know, I kind of dug in a little bit, and I was looking at our code. And so for me, the problem that I have with this resolution is that it really has no binding effect. So it's policy, but it's not law, and it conflicts with our specific provisions of the code. So for example, under 7415, it states that ordinances, resolutions, and other matters and subjects requiring action by the commission may be introduced by a member of the commission. And also, you know, again, we have some vetting process under 7415. So my question is, how can you have a resolution that's in conflict with the ordinance? Don't you really need to, you know, don't you need to repeal and replace or create a new ordinance in order to do that?
a new ordinance in order to do that? Because 4.1 is more general, right? You cite that in the recitals, it says, "The commission shall determine its own rules of procedure in order of business and keep a journal open for public inspection," but 7414 and 15 are more specific, which allow that, you know, which allow that.
The two conflict.
So for me, to me, it's really, this is not the subject of a resolution, it really should be an ordinance, if that's the direction that you want to go.
Yeah, I disagree. I think it can be done by resolution, you know, and I don't think it's in conflict. I think what you're doing is, clearly, anybody can put it on the agenda, what you're doing is establishing a procedure for doing so.
Correct.
And so I think you can do it by resolution if you want us to draft an ordinance. We'll be happy to do that, but I don't think that there's a conflict.
And again, I think it's just in the spirit of how we're doing something. I mean, I don't, you know, basically, if you pounded the table and said, you know, "I want this on, I don't want my colleagues to see it until the meeting," okay. You know, I don't think any, if that's really what's going to happen, I'm not going to, you know, I don't think I'd argue with you. But I guess what I'm saying is, is that I think this is a better way to socialize the things that are coming down the pike sometimes, and then also, it's just a better, as Larissa pointed out, I think it's better for the public. So we can argue over the procedure of how it could be interpreted or if it's conflicting or not conflicting. You know, I just looked, when we talked about this, you know, I stopped at "The commission shall determine its own rules of procedure," even if that statement conflicts with the rest of the code, so.
You know, for me, you know, it's, it doesn't have any binding effect.
But are you saying you don't want to do it, or is that what you're saying?
I don't, for me, the code is very clear that we have the ability to do that, and as long as we present it, which in last month's case, that was the case, "All ordinances shall, you know, shall have been approved as to form in legal sufficiency by the city attorney."
The code also says, "The city charter provides, 'The city commission shall determine its own rules of procedure in order as business as it relates to city commission meetings.'"
Right, but that's general, and usually with general and specific, specific control. So for me, there are two provisions.
And our city attorney feels that it's okay?
I feel that the resolution conflicts with the code, and it doesn't have binding effect. So, you know, I'm a no.
Okay. So you can vote against it. Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, my, regardless of the legal piece that we're talking about, I think as a matter of practice, as one of the newer commissioners here, it's extremely important. We have staggering terms, so you're always going to have varying levels of experience up here. And for the newer ones, it's important to be able to hear the discussion upfront, it gives you the opportunity to figure out, you know, who you need to be speaking to, your own staff, and really research things as you're getting more comfortable in your roles. So for me, I just think it makes sense as a matter of policy or however you want to phrase it, it just makes sense to do it this way.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have just a quick comment. I think anything that helps with staff time, resources, is beneficial to us overall. And like you said, if someone feels very strongly that they need to put something on, I guess you deal with it, but it's like the three-minute rule, we don't ever follow that.
Norm, you were good with the three-minute rule. Yeah, I'm a bit more liberal on that one. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Noted. Thank you, Commissioner Goleman. Okay, motion carries. Item 10M.
A resolution approving change order numbers 26 and 27 relating to the agreement with Royal Global Networks for the Collins Avenue Utilities Undergrounding Project.
Chris? Or Stan? Who's on this one?
Oh, yeah, it's enough.
Yeah, there you go.
So this is a direct purchase change that came up last minute where we need to pay for the additional streetlights, and we had to come to the commission in order to be able to get the benefit of the tax.
The tax saving?
Yeah, the sales tax savings.
Got it. Sales tax savings. Okay. Any questions? Fair or motion? Fair or second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, 10N.
10N is a resolution electing a member as a vice mayor.
Okay. I get to make the appointment for vice mayor, and Vice Mayor Svetchen has done a great job. I have a day job, so a lot of, so we kind of split duty sometimes covering the myriad of responsibilities, but I'd like to re-up Vice Mayor Svetchen. Any discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Fair or second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Larissa.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for the resolutions. We are on to discussion items. Item 12A.
12A is a discussion regarding SIB Residence Academy.
Commissioner Viscara.
So, in the spirit, I'll just take a line from your state of the union, you said that a real community is made of civic-minded residents who participate and enjoy the lifestyle. And in the past year, I've seen that there's been an interest, people have been interested, and they've come, and they've been frightened, or sometimes, you know, they have different ideas. But I've also seen that people, you know, just telling you you should get involved, sometimes it's not enough. You need to be, you know, we need a little bit more education, and we need to be shown how to get involved, because it can be intimidating, in terms of the boards or anything else, or we don't know how our government works. And so all over the state of Florida, there are different forms, they're called either citizens academies or local government academies, I call this one residence academy, but that may change. And it's basically like a mini semester, it could be six weeks, nine weeks, you know, depending on the municipality, and of basically residents learning how their government works. And if you're in this class and it's free, you know, you meet your city manager, you get to have exchanges with your local government, the chief of police, or somebody from the police department, depending on what the sessions are. And it's intended to not only educate you, but build positive relationships and improve the communication between the community and the local government. So, you know, we've, I think, everybody received like a little outline of what Lauderdale Lakes is doing, and, you know, it's open in terms of how we want to structure it, but I thought that we should take advantage of the momentum in terms of what the community is expressing their interest, and then giving them an avenue on where to go so that you're empowered and you feel more, you know, informed, so you know how to approach things, or even who to call sometimes. Sometimes you just don't even know that, you know, you need to call somebody, but you don't know who. So these courses are intended to educate the community and strengthen our community.
So I would be supportive if we polled the community and saw if we got participation. That's, you know.
Say that again?
I would be supportive if we did some kind of a, you know, outreach to the community to see if folks are interested.
Yes, absolutely.
Before we went and structured, before we went and structured, you know, the program. So.
Because it's a paradox, right? You want to encourage public participation because there's a lack of public participation, and you want to fix it by encouraging public participation.
Yeah.
So I understand that.
And everybody's busy. It just seems like, you know, I mean, and I don't blame folks, but I mean, folks are issue-oriented, you know, so we had a lot of hot potato issues this year, so we saw a lot of participation. I wouldn't necessarily say it's a trend, you know, because I think what I've noticed when the, yeah, when the hot issues kind of taper off, a lot of times, we don't see the same level of participation. I'm not, you know, I'm the happiest when a lot of folks show up, and even when they're aggravated, but I just think, I think it's a very interesting, I think it's a great idea, I just would want to make sure that, before we went through the hoops of putting a program together, that we knew we were going to get some meaningful participation.
Agreed.
Yeah. So, any other comments?
I have some comments.
Go ahead.
I think it's really a very forward-thinking idea, you know, right now, there's a big push for civic education, there's actual now legislation that has been passed that children must get an additional amount of civic education, and whenever I go to the school, and you've probably seen this as well, you're, I'm shocked how little they know about the local government, they know so much about, they know enough, not so much about the state and federal and perhaps Tallahassee. And I think that there potentially is an opportunity to partner with the teachers at the school to do something like this so that you are providing it in an environment that they're already used to being in. Because I agree with Bud, I think that people are issue-oriented, as Art stated, you know, he has better use of his time, but he had a reason to come. But I think it's a really great idea to help introduce people into making it less difficult or challenging, or like you said, scary to come here, and see, you know, maybe there is a lot of interest in it, so, yeah, I agree if we poll.
Any other comments?
No, I'd like to, you know, just help explore and see how we can move forward with it.
Yeah, so I'd say work with staff, let's figure out a way to do some outreach and see what kind of interest you get.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, item 12B. Vice Mayor? The continuing vice mayor.
12B is a discussion regarding additional law enforcement presence during Super Bowl. Okay. So this is a conversation that I've already had with some of our police officers, with the city manager. This is in response to the Super Bowl, which I am sure everybody here knows is coming February 2nd. And prior to that, there's going to be a lot of partying in our city, and we know that from past events that we've had, the tragic event that we had during Mother's Day. And I understand from our police department that we already have a plan set in place where we're going to have additional police officers, and those hotels and buildings that have chosen to participate are already participating in having some more presence. But we are, like everyone else, we, there are just not enough to go around, and if, at all possible, if you can just give a little bit of an update of how many people we're going to have that weekend, us personally versus the hotels in the areas, and to give people an idea of the kind of activity that's going to be happening, specifically what's happening at Gateway as well, because I don't think people here know.
Well, this is going to be a tremendous weekend for all of South Florida, Super Bowl coming in. So, you know, we've talked to a lot of the resorts in the city, and, you know, they've pretty much let us know that they're all going to be, you know, pretty much at capacity. The good thing about this particular type of event is, yes, there's going to be a lot of people in the area, all of South Florida. The type of clientele I think you're going to see is more of a corporate clientele, I don't think, we're not, hopefully not going to anticipate any major problems or anything along those lines. But with that being said, we have upped our staff tremendously, we've got a squad of guys that are strictly going to go from hotel and resort, you know, we're just going to make our presence known. We're going to have people out on the beach, and we're going to have a lot more police presence that's going to be available to us. There are so many different events going on in this particular area, because obviously Abantura is hosting one of the Super Bowl teams, so, you know, they're really short, they're looking for more officers to come over and assist them, and obviously, we'll always be available to go there if they need us. But we have elected to keep all of our assets and resources in town, so we're going to, you know, our officers aren't going to be working jobs other places, they're going to be here. So, and then the Saturday before, there's going to be an event at Gateway Park, there's going to be a private event, a private corporate event there, we're going to have that completely staffed with tremendous assets, as we usually do on those type of events. So I want the community just to understand we're going to be out there, there's certainly nothing to worry about as far as we're concerned. It's going to be a time for South Florida to shine, it'll be a time for our city to shine, which it always does, and we will certainly be out here. Command staff will be out the entire weekend, so we're prepared.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I think the nosebleed seats are up to like 3,000 now, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, the numbers are unbelievable for those seats.
Are they even available?
Yeah, like StubHub and stuff, yeah, resale like 3,000 bucks, I mean, it's unbelievable. So, yeah, but, okay.
And I just want to add also another plug to the event that the police department's going to participate in on the 28th on Tuesday at the school regarding human trafficking. It's going to be very specific about the Super Bowl, allowing any residents that want to go, you don't have to be a parent, the direct number to the police department, so if you see something to call, you don't necessarily need to call 911, and I appreciate the collaboration with the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Eddie, Lieutenant. We have two very patient citizens for our citizens forum. Fabiola?
Good night. Fabiola Stuibeson, 326 Point Ciana Drive. I'm coming to talk about two items, or two things, the school and the park. First, about the school, in case that anybody doesn't know yet, our school is being rented out, the facility, on Sundays for a Baptist church to come and do an event or a service there, every Sunday until the end of the fiscal school year, which is until the end of June, which is okay because they went through the process of going to the school board and signing the agreements, et cetera, everything that they need to do to do the rental of the facility. The issue is that they install and they have a lot of major video and lighting equipment in the school right now in the stage. And part of their agreement in the item 2E, paragraph 2, it says, "Not store any items at the school site, no exceptions." They even have a window of 24 hours after they finish to take everything. Everything is still there, almost of the stuff is still there. And when I say major equipment, it's like equipment to make like a video, a musical video, and lightnings, and there is a tower of light that right now is blocking one of the exit doors from the backstage. So God forbid we have an emergency in the cafeteria, there are two doors that open to North Bay Road in front of the Pelicans, one of the doors is completely blocked by this equipment. So my issue is that I believe they're breaking the contract, and we need to, if we have a good communication with the school board or whoever, district, I think we should enforce that, because I think it's extremely clear what it says, no storage, no exceptions. And right now, it's equipment, and they did a very good job hiding it between the black curtains, like you have to go, and if you know the stage, you know that there is stuff there that doesn't belong. But it's there, it is hiding, but it's not supposed to be there. And if we allow it right now, I mean, the limits are set, and if we allow them to break this limit and to break the law, then tomorrow is going to be, oh, not only that equipment, but also costumes because they're heavy, or glasses because they are breakable, or whatever. So the point is that they went through the process, they signed an agreement, we are not supposed to have anything in there. That's number one, that's about the school. Second is about the park, about the Pelican Park. We have very nice weather these past few days in our winter, and it's very sad that we haven't solved the situation of the park. The park remained closed from 2:30 to 3:30. And I know that Sandra, Sylvia, Susan, they've been working with that. I want to see like more of an emphasis and open it, because my son, yesterday morning, I was making his breakfast, his lunch to take to school, so I'm making croissants, and I'm putting it in his bag, he said, "No, mommy, I don't want to take croissant." I said, "Okay, why?" "Because it takes too long to eat." And I'm like, "Okay, but you had to add your lunch." He said, "No, I'd rather play Uno cards with my friends." Why? Because they don't have a recess. So the park used to be the recess, and I see the effect that it's having in so many children, they don't have a way to decompress. They go from the school into the car of the parent, or they walk to the home to either play video games or start doing homework. So I think it's sad, because I used to sit down in the park for more than one hour, and I used to see my son playing, my son running with many other friends, that is gone, and now they want to play cards, like really actually play and socialize, and that is gone. And I think it's not fair, again, to be affecting thousands of residents, because it's not only the children, the parents, the grandmothers, the grandfathers, the nannies, et cetera. And it's also sad right now to see a mom with a little child which is kicked out at 2:30 from the park. Actually, they tell you, "You have to go." And they close the door, and the child is sitting outside looking at the park, not understanding why they kicked them out, and then in one hour, then you're supposed to go inside. It doesn't work like that. And also, like I said before, our children, they don't have an option, there is not an option. There is only one park where they can go after the school directly, especially the little ones. If the issue is with the after-school or the after-care, I believe it was a big mistake to continue increasing the number of seats in that after-care program, if that is what end up closing the park for us, for the residents. And if that's the issue, we are making a very few the park for us, for the residents. And if that's the issue, we are making a very few, a small group of people happy, and we are really affecting a very large number. So, I don't see how the math work in this case. So, but thank you. I don't know if anybody has an answer about those two issues.
Are we a party to that contract between the Baptist church and the school board? We're not?
No. It is a rental facility between the school board.
So, how would you expect us to tell them what to do?
No, I'm not expecting you guys to tell what to do. I'm just saying, like, I know we have a very good line of work or communication between the city, the school board, our school, Norman School. So, I believe like...
Have you spoken to the principal about it?
Yes. Yes. I have a meeting with her Tuesday morning. We are in the same line, and I just wanted to inform you guys, in case you guys don't know. And if any way you can just acknowledge that you know what's going on, and like, I think we are not happy, because they are breaking a simple contract that is, that line is just no storage, no exception, no installation, no equipment, and it's heavy equipment, closing one of our exits. I think that four of you have the children, I mean, four of the community, four commissioners have children there.
Yeah.
I don't want my exit of, to be closed, like, to be blocked, because we are having an event this Thursday. Everybody's invited. We have our first international night. We're expecting a lot of people in that cafeteria. Again, one of our exits is blocked. What if we have a situation that we need to use it? So, I think we cannot do anything in this school. I understand it's like an embassy, but the point is that it still is our people inside. When I say an embassy, I mean that is there, we're going to do anything. Yeah, zero. I got it. I finally got it. I finally got it. After all this year, I got it. But it still is our people, is our children, is our community, the one that is inside there. So, I think that's important for us. And the park.
Thank you, Fabiola.
And the park. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadia Goro. Nadia? Thank you for waiting, Nadia. You're last, and certainly not least. So...
Hopefully, I'm best.
There you go.
Hi. My name is Nadia Goro. I'm one of the owners that live in Golden Shores. I live in 18925 Atlantic Boulevard. There is 15 new houses that were built, and we're the 15 new houses, the only single development that has sidewalks. By us having sidewalks, it took away parking spots for our guests. And I have other residents here. Some left because they couldn't wait. And we're keep getting violation from code enforcement, because we're parking our cars, not blocking sidewalks, in our driveway, and they keep getting tickets every time we have guests come by. I came, I went upstairs today, and they proposed for me to come here to speak to you, maybe to at least get like resident decals to put outside, so our guests could at least have something to park, because there's no parking on the streets at all. And, I mean...
Okay. Yeah. So, you're saying that when they park in your driveway and they block the sidewalk, you get a...
They don't block the driveway, because when we originally moved in, I was, I'm one of the first owners, so is Ashley and Brennan. They told us we cannot park the sidewalk, which we understand, because people walk there. So, we parked sideways without blocking it, and we're still getting ticketed.
So, when you're parking the swale, you're saying between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes. Not on, not on the grass, just over there, just on the actual concrete. And we're still getting ticketed every time we have a guest come by.
Okay. Okay. We'll work with Stan and Chris. I get it. I get it. Like where I live, we don't have sidewalks, but we park along the street, and nobody, and no bother.
Yeah. At least to give us something, because we're the only street, if we didn't have the sidewalk, we could technically put our cars without a problem when our guests come. There's only two parking spots that we can put our cars in.
Yeah.
I mean, at least you guys could do something about it. We have other houses that are also complaining in our development.
Yeah. Stan?
I have her contact information that I got from earlier, so I'll be in contact.
Okay. That'll be great, Nadia. Yeah. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And, but we get it. Yeah. We get it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Appreciate it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. So, it was less than three hours.